Item here before we start our official calendar, and that is, we want to take a moment and recognize Desiree Williams-Rajee, because she is a star. And here's how she's a star. On July 15th of this year, the White House celebrated 10 Champions of Change for Climate Equity. Our own Desiree Williams-Rajee was among those honored as a Champion of Change for Climate Equity, and she was invited there to the White House. She's the Equity Specialist with the Bureau of Planning and Sustainability, been a longtime leader for the Bureau, for the city, and for our community. She's been instrumental in building equity into the core of the Bureau of Planning and Sustainability's work. The 2015 Climate Action Plan is a great example of this. It drives home that we don't succeed on climate action if we aren't also successful on equity. Desiree helped city staff engage with community organizations to rebuild the Climate Action Plan to address equity. That wasn't easy, and our work on this front has really only begun, but it's already led to some profound changes in our plan, in our programs, and our policy. So, we appreciate Desiree as a climate equity champion. It's gratifying to see the White House does too. And those champions who were honored at the White House have actively worked in their communities for public health and socioeconomic equities exacerbated by a changing environment. So, I just want to give her a chance to come up and speak about this, but I'll just say, on a personal level, one of the most teachable moments for me on the whole subject of climate equity was that amazing invitation that I got to go to the Vatican and meet with Pope Francis on the subject. And he said about his encyclical, that people say this is an environmental encyclical, and it is, but it's really about people and the impact on their lives. And obviously, that's exactly your perspective. So, we're very proud of you, and we wanted to give you a moment here, as well as a moment in Washington, DC, to talk about your passion.
Thank you so much.
Get a little closer to the mic.
Yes, I will. Mayor Hales and city commissioners, thank you for having me here today to receive this acknowledgement. To be recognized by the White House for the work on the Climate Action Plan, and to be able to represent our city at the highest echelons of our nation's government was an immense honor. As I was thinking of what to say today, two words came to mind, and the first is "hope." While in DC, I was invited to share about our work in Portland. I spoke of how critical it is to connect the issues of race and the environment, how gentrification is a climate change issue. The challenge for us today is to create a livable city for all, a city that is green, that does not push out its people of color or its poor, thereby essentially increasing their climate burden as others reap the benefits. Because we know in truth, in this global race, to reduce carbon emissions, it will not be a net win if our progress is at the cost of safety, health, and opportunity for our most marginalized communities. I share that institutional racism is a professional competency, that we must, it is in fact, an absolute imperative, that government be able to understand how policies, practices, and programs serve to perpetuate disparity, and actively work against the outcomes we seek to create as public servants. The prosperity of our cities and our nation depends on our ability to no longer be blind. I spoke about our definition of equity, and how it operates as a corrective mechanism to longstanding injustice, how focusing on institutional racism is the tool we use to think clearly and in a more sophisticated manner. It is more than just diversity and inclusion. It is a commitment to creating sustained, better outcomes for communities that for so long have received just the opposite, and in turn, create better outcomes for all. The reason that "hope" is a word that comes to mind is because after the event was over, I met with members of the audience. So, these were members of local government, nonprofit staff, White House staff, and there was even a group of students from Howard University. What stuck with me in their eyes and their words was a profound sense of hope. Some embraced me, held my hand, even grasped onto my arm to say "thank you." To hear the work that a city like Portland is doing on climate change and equity, and more specifically institutional racism, gave them hope. And I realized that our Climate Action Plan is giving people hope across the nation that the work we do in government can be different. I saw the value of our honesty and courage. As our panel moderator Mustafa Ali from the EPA said, "Let's have real talk about real issues and create real solutions." That is not to say this work isn't hard, and that we won't trip over ourselves along the way, but it is the right path, and this is the journey that we need to be on now more than ever. This is the kind of innovation that cities are hungry for, and we, just as we have been with sustainability, are in a leadership role in this country to reimagine and recreate what success looks like. The second word is gratitude. The work is deeply personal for me. It is not just about a story within my lived time on this earth. It is a product of generations of racial struggle. Of slavery and civil injustice on my African-American side, the impact of colonialism on my Filipino. It is the work to prevent the inheritance of racial struggle for my children and children's children, as they are concurrently dealing with the inheritance of climate change. What I'm grateful for is the opportunity to have this moment in time, in this place, to be doing the work I do. I'm grateful to work with such incredibly talented people at the Bureau of Planning and Sustainability. It is a privilege to work every day with such intelligent and passionate people. I'm grateful to work with Susan Anderson, who has been a trailblazer in climate change work, and that I have the opportunity to continue and participate in the climate planning legacy that she has initiated for this city. I'm grateful for the Climate Action Plan team, Michael Armstrong, Michelle Crim, Kyle Deznar, Ingrid Fish, and Taryn Evans, Tim Lynch from Multnomah County, as well as many other staff who contributed and committed to the integration of equity into the updated plan. This process instigated deep learning for all of us that continues today. I'm grateful to our teachers in the process, the community organization representatives, Vivian Satterfield from Opel, Duncan Huang and Christine Nguyen from Apano, Rose Hiber, Amanda Kelly Lopez from Wisdom of the Elders, Les Shannon and Cassie Cohen from Groundwork Portland, Claudia Ronna Cullen from Upstream Public Health, and Demi Espinoza and Julian Meyer from the Coalition of Communities of Color. I'm grateful for the support that City Council has given to the plan creating the space for deep work to happen on both carbon emission reduction and racial inequity. I'm grateful for the opportunity to be an ambassador for this great city and for equity work. And lastly, I have gratitude for work that on a daily basis gives me hope in a climate that is definitely changing. Thank you.
Desiree, thank you very much. Questions from the past? Let's hear it, please. Questions or comments from your --
Just, I wonder if each of us could impose on you and get a copy of your speech?
Absolutely.
Yeah, I think that would be a good thing for us to post. So, that was very well said. Yeah, thanks so much, Desiree. And I think one of the questions I would have for you is, how do we, you know, through things like what you've just done, obviously, at the White House, but, and through C-40, hopefully, we continue that.
Absolutely.
But how else do you see ways, particularly people-to-people, as opposed to official-to-official? How we might spread good ideas from one city to another? I mean, Bill McKibben was just here, you know, Sunday night, sort of the army of one out there trying to tell the world about climate change. But obviously, he has allies, and you're one of them. But how can we, how can we get grassroots work going in other communities based on what we've done here, and maybe learn some from them, too?
Well, absolutely. I think this work has been a part of, I think, a changing tide in the city of Portland, and the groups who participated in the Climate Action Plan equity process have taken their own initiative to really move forward on climate justice and environmental justice work here in the city, and are now being looked at in Verde, led by Alan Hippolito, and Tony DeFalco's work in looking at sustainable economic development that looks at climate-neutral communities in places that are traditionally underserved. This city is setting examples across the nation. And I just came back from the Urban Sustainable Directors Network annual meeting, and again, shared the work that we've been doing here, and to see that government staff are looking to create those new models, and that this is spreading. It's spreading like a really great virus, not probably like the one that Steve Novick has. But something that's really positive. And what that's doing, our impact with government staff, is having them think differently about the way that they do their work with communities, and looking at, how do you empower? How do you know when to actually move out of the way? When do you know to work side-by-side and in partnership? And take away sort of the hierarchical nature of things, and really work arm-in-arm on such challenging, challenging issues together? And how do we advance as partners in that? So, it's happening here. It continues. It continues. The work continues in the community. And I am really just so pleased to see what's happening across the country as well.
Well, thank you very much. Well, appreciate the chance to bring you into our chambers, not just the White House's public rooms, and celebrate this. As Commissioner in Charge of the Bureau of Planning and Sustainability, I'm very proud of the work that we're doing, very proud of you as one of our employees. Just to have a small token I want to give you, as from our, from the council, for our esteem, we have an official gift that we give to VIPs around the world.
Thank you.
This is a scarf. This is a scarf that was created by the Portland Garment Factory with the image of the Tilikum Crossing on it, which is a symbol of our sustainability efforts. I was privileged to give the first of these to Michelle Obama, and it seems very appropriate that we give one to you. So, thank you. Job well done.
Thank you very much.
Great work. Okay, we're going to move into our regular calendar in a moment. We have, it looks like, four people signed up for communications with the council, followed by the regular agenda and our consent agenda. I have no request to take items off the consent calendar, is that right? Okay. Basic rules of decorum, folks. Welcome to the council chambers. If you want to speak on one of the calendar items today, just let our clerk know. We'll typically allow three minutes for individual testimony. Looks like we won't have so many people today that we'll have to shorten that. We follow the rules of decorum here, which is, please don't disrupt anyone else's testimony or use profanity. You will be considered disruptive and asked to leave or excluded if you engage in those practices. We also like to make sure that people can be heard and not be intimidated. So, if you agree with someone's point of view, feel free to give them a wave of the hand, or a thumbs up, or some other positive hand gesture. If you disagree with someone's point of view, a polite hand gesture to the negative is all right as well. But we ask, other than celebrating events like we just did, that we not applaud or make verbal demonstrations in the council so that everyone feels like their views can be heard. With that, we will proceed, please, with item 1180.
Request of Julie Reardon to address council regarding placing a neighborhood polluter on the do-not-buy list.
Good morning. Welcome. Good morning.
Good morning. Hello, my name is Julie. I live in southeast Portland. I'm a volunteer with South Portland Air Quality, founded in response to the identification of toxic hotspots by the U.S. Forest Service Moss Study earlier this year, which showed elevated levels of nickel and arsenic in the neighborhoods around Precision Cast Parts. In conjunction with a public comment to the Socially Responsible Investment Committee, I'd like to address City Council directly to formally request that it divests its $4.8 million in holdings from Precision Cast Parts, and that the company is placed on the city's Corporate Securities Do Not Buy List. The Oregon DEQ has since monitored the air around Precision, and recent results show levels as much as four times higher than health-based benchmarks for nickel, arsenic, and hexavalent chromium, exposing more than 10,000 people to toxic air. The Oregon Health Authority has launched an environmental health assessment to determine how toxics found in the neighborhoods surrounding Precision have impacted the health of our community. More than 35 years ago, they dumped over 21,000 cubic feet of toxic waste, including radioactive, into the Johnson Creek landfill, which is, was unlined and currently being looked into for leakage. Three studies in 11 years of Johnson Creek show increasing levels of nickel, hexavalent chromium, and PCBs downstream from their outfall. In 2014, Tymet, a subsidiary of Precision, was given a $13.75 million fine for illegally making 84,000 pounds of PCBs per year, the largest fine in the history of the Federal Toxic Substances Control Act. That same year, 20 and 1/2 tons of toxic waste was discovered in the drainpipe beneath Precision, which leads directly into Johnson Creek. Their labor practices are also controversial. In 1998, the National Labor Relations Board arranged a settlement for a former employee who had been wrongfully terminated for attempting to unionize. Investigators found Precision had issued rules against the distribution and discussion of pro-union support, threatened employees with termination, and relocating the plant to Washington if they voted in favor. However, they allowed anti-union supporters to use company resources and distribute on company time. In 2001, an employee died after falling into a vat of caustic acid. And since 2008, OSHA has issued Precision at least 62 serious violations, nine of which may have resulted in death. OSHA investigated complaints from employees include respiratory protection materials handling and fall protection. Their market practices are questionable due to their high volume of acquisitions over the years. In 1999, the Federal Trade Commission filed charges against PCC due to the acquisition of Wyman Gordon. FTC alleged that by eliminating competition in these highly concentrated markets, the acquisition would have allowed PCC to exercise market power and increase prices. When the city of Portland made history by choosing to divest from Walmart, Commissioner Novick was quoted as saying, "We care about working people. We care about the environment. We care about human health and money talks." Precision Cast Parts has committed toxic trespass, fostered a negligent work environment, spent decades cornering the market, and mistreated union supporters. To take taxpayer dollars and invest them in a company which exploits our community is adding insult to injury and does not truly reflect the values of our city. Thank you.
Thank you very much. You brought this at a good time, because obviously, we have that coming up on the council calendar in the next couple of weeks.
Yes.
So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Let's take 1181, please.
Request of Sarah Hobbs to address council regarding concerns about mayoral transition.
Hobbs, come on up.
For the record, my name is Sarah Hobbs. On the 12th of this month, I come down to City Hall just to say hello, then leave. What I saw was a quiet group of people, and thought, oh, they're okay, and went to leave. Two steps from the bottom of the stairs, the front door of City Hall, I stopped and looked up, wondering what was happening, as I was now hearing panicked screaming. What I was witness to was brutal assaults by Portland police officers as they were pushing people down the stairs after being given the order by you, Mayor Hales, to clear the building. One young man was pushed so hard at the top of the stairs. He ended up face-down, unconscious, at the bottom of the stairs, having landed at my feet. And I was not allowed to help him, or even check to see if he was still breathing. I saw a woman startled by something behind her, and she turned her head and watched as pepper spray hit her in the face. Once out of the building, I watched people fighting not to fall, two people falling and getting trampled, and worrying the entire time about the young, the unconscious young man still on the stairs. If this is an example of improved policing, I am badly frightened. In transition, I know that Mayor Lutz Wheeler could opt not to take on the position of Police Commissioner, but I would ask that during discussions, that you discuss what happened. One thing that is also not being brought into the discussion is Multnomah County Sheriff's deputies were also involved. We were pushed out the door by Portland police, but then we were pushed to the sidewalk by Multnomah County Sheriff's deputies. I know people were very taken aback by my reaction. But at that point, having just gotten pushed out the door by the police when I was told to move by the sheriff's deputies, I said, "No." Next thing I know, I've got a nice stick in my chest pushing me back. When ordered to the sidewalk again, I said, "No," was pushed again. Friends came out of concern for my safety and got me back. I know Commissioner Fritz, he saw the picture that ended up a lot in news of me helping a young lady that got pepper sprayed on the transit hall. That is normally what I do. I am not one to be confrontational. And, but I was so overly appalled by what I personally witnessed happened and left back to her.
Thank you, Sarah. Thank you very much. Okay, let's take item 1182, please.
1182. Request of Steve Unger to address council regarding need to revisit Airbnb and short-term rentals' impact on housing shortage in Portland.
Come on up.
I emailed copies of my slides, which you could print out, if anybody needs them.
I'm not sure, Steve, if we got those, so. Thank you.
Okay. May I deserve to go through by slide? Slide one. About two years ago, City Council developed a new ordinance to help regulate Airbnb and short-term rentals in Portland. Since then, the issue of housing availability and rising rents have become much worse, especially in central Portland and close in neighborhoods. Unfortunately, the Short-Term Rental Ordinance 1.0 has failed to regulate Airbnb, especially Airbnb host-absent entire-place rentals, which convert long-term rentals to short-term vacation rentals. And Airbnb has been unwilling to help. Slide two. The housing shortage affects both affordable and market-rate housing, especially in central city and close in neighborhoods where rents have risen dramatically, and people have been forced to move further out to find housing they can afford. Slide three. One culprit is Airbnb host-absent entire-place rentals, which are really urban vacation rentals. According to the website Inside Airbnb, Airbnb has over 2,000 entire-place listings in Portland, over 60% of all their listings. And 40% of Portland Airbnb hosts have multiple listings, even though the current law limits most short-term rentals to a homeowner's primary residence. Slide four. Significantly, entire-place rentals on Airbnb affect some neighborhoods greatly, while others, not at all. Slide five. Portland's attempt to regulate short-term rentals has failed. There are now over 3,000 Airbnb listings in Portland. Over 2,000 are host-absent entire-place listings. And of the 3,000 listings, less than 400 short-term rentals have been licensed in Portland. Slide six. What caused this failure? The Short-Term Rental Ordinance 1.0 focused on the number of bedrooms rather than the type of listing. It allowed landlords to rent entire apartments. It allowed homeowners to rent ADUs. BDS compliance lacks resources. And most of all, Airbnb refuses to help. Slide seven. There are a lot, there's a lot that Airbnb could do to help Portland manage short-term rentals, but Airbnb continues to refuse to do so. Airbnb will not provide any city with contact information for their hosts. They will not take down listings that do not display a city permit number. They will not take down entire-place rentals after they are listed for rent for 90 nights in the calendar year. And when Airbnb quotes statistics on impact on housing, they give misleading citywide averages rather than data on entire-place rentals by zip code or neighborhood. And Airbnb consciously pits private-room rental hosts against the city for political purposes. Slide eight. What needs to happen is to amend the current ordinance. Host-resident private-room rentals should continue to be encouraged because they do not affect housing. The focus should be on the listing service and the entire-place rentals. If Airbnb continues to refuse to help, the city should increase the lodging tax on entire-place rentals from 11.5% to 100%. Since Airbnb already collects and emits lodging tax, this would effectively price Airbnb entire-place rentals out of the market without violating internet freedom of speech.
Steve, thank you very much. No, I appreciate you bringing this to us. Thank you.
Mayor, apropos of this, I have a copy of the complaint that Airbnb filed against the mayor of New York and the attorney general. And in it, Airbnb takes the position, under federal law, both the Constitution and statutory law, that local jurisdictions are preempted from requiring them to enforce any local rules as a operator of a platform. It's a sweeping challenge to the ability of local governments to hold Airbnb responsible for any local rules or regulations. And it effectively takes the position that it is exclusively a concern between the host and the guest. In light of that, because the net effect of this, of the claims in this lawsuit is that we have no recourse, under their view, against Airbnb for any of the community standards that we've established, I'm going to ask the city attorney to give us an opinion on this. Furthermore, I think we have to, as a council, come together and talk about the implications of this lawsuit, because this is the nuclear card. This is effectively saying that our regulations cannot be enforced against them on any basis, claiming protections under the First Amendment and preemption under federal law. And if that's truly their position, then the implications cover every city and state in the country. And I would hope we'd have an opportunity to discuss that in light of our efforts to get them to comply with our rules.
Steve, thanks for raising this issue, and obviously, we're looking forward to seeing both the complaint, if you wouldn't mind distributing that, Commissioner, even before we get the city attorney's opinion. So, timely. Thank you very much. Okay, let's take 1183.
Request of Leslie Goss to address council regarding Bureau of Environmental Services, Toowiligar Boulevard Sewer Project. She called and is not able to make it.
Okay. All right, then, let's move to the consent calendar. Again, I don't believe we have any requests to take items off, so let's take a vote, please, on the consent calendar. Is printed?
Novick?
Aye.
Fritz?
Aye.
Fish?
Mayor, I just want to acknowledge that in the consent agenda, we're appointing Kathryn McLeod, who has previously been considered for a position and is very well-regarded. So, we congratulate her for that appointment to the Fire and Police Disability Retirement Board. And there's also an item in which the Bureau of Environmental Services is accepting a $400,000 grant from the United States Environmental Protection Agency to address brownfields. And I just want to thank the professionals at the Bureau for their great work in securing this grant. And as my colleagues know, a centerpiece of our comprehensive plan going forward is converting brownfields to productive use. And this is a small step in the right direction. So, I want to thank my team. Aye.
Altzman?
Aye.
Hales?
Aye, thank you. Okay, let's move to item 1184, please.
Adopt the fiscal year 2016-17 Fall Supplemental Budget and make other budget-related changes.
Okay. Andrew Scott, please, come walk us through this proposal.
Slowly.
Walk us, yeah. I should, sorry, didn't mean the bad pun. But you are actually walking now, so that's an improvement.
Yes, I remember the crutches, so that's a good, good step forward. And I'm here, Andrew Scott, Budget Director, and I'm here with Jessica Kennard, the city's Supplemental Budget Coordinator. I'm going to do a very, very quick recap. We did have a work session on the Fall Supplemental Budget last week. We went through in detail the requests that are on there. I'm going to talk a little bit about, again, recap what's filed, and then there are some amendments that have been passed around that I think we'll discuss today as well. So, just as a reminder, the, we did have an $8 million excess balance carryover from last fiscal year. In the bump that, as it was filed, that has been, $4 million of that is set aside for capital projects. The other $4 million went into general fund contingency. As filed, the ordinance funds $4.7 million of capital projects, so exceeds the 50% financial policy passed by council. It also funds $3.7 million in new requests, which would leave about $1.64 million in unrestricted contingency for the remainder of the year. In terms of position changes, there are 81.88, so just under 82 positions being added. The bulk of those in Transportation, Bureau of Development Services, and OMF, and then scattered throughout other bureaus as well. And then I do want to just remind you, what we did talk about last week, the bump does include an adjustment to the current appropriation level target for the Portland Housing Bureau to address the IGA, the Intergovernmental Agreement with Multnomah County for the Joint Office of Home Services. So, it increases Housing Bureau's budget by $3.5 million, which will, of course, be incorporated into the forecast that we issue in December.
Okay. Questions? I have one. I just want to make sure this is in the record, and that I understand it correctly. I'm very happy to have included in the proposal the Vision Zero appropriation for outer Halsey. It was my intent in doing that, and I think the Commissioner in Charge is understanding that those dollars from the general fund will be matched by systems development charge dollars, and that the complete project will be built, not just part of it.
Yes, and Mayor, the Supplemental Budget does include a budget note to that effect.
And Mayor, I should add that I was at an East Portland Transportation Forum a couple of weeks ago, and we heard strong community support for the Halsey projects. I think people would be very happy.
That's great. All right, thank you. Other questions? I know we have amendments to talk about, but other questions for staff? Okay, then maybe we should take amendments and have you two standing by, and then we'll take testimony. take testimony.
Mayor, I have two amendments to offer.
Okay.
And these have been discussed with council offices. The first is a, I move to adjust the supplemental budget as follows. Increase the position authority in the Water Bureau by 3.0, regular FTE, including one environmental specialist, one laboratory analyst, one, and one laboratory coordinator to address the increased workload related to lead testing in water. The Bureau will fund the positions by reducing the water fund contingency by $297,444 in the current year. Ongoing funding for the positions will be included in the annual budget development process and rates update, with impacts to rates offset by other rate reductions. And this would also require updating Exhibits 1 through 5 as needed to reflect this change. And I make that motion.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. And let's keep going. If you have another one, I think.
Mayor, I have a second amendment. And Mayor, this is one cosponsored by you, the mayor, and me. It is to allocate, excuse me, to allocate $20,000 in unrestricted contingency to special appropriations to repair damages to the Portland Mercado food carts. And we would update Exhibits 1 through 5 as needed to reflect this change. And I have some, first of all, I have a second, and then I want to explain that amendment.
I'll second that. Okay.
So, is it 20 or 25?
We're asking for 20.
20.
Oh.
It was originally 25, but it looks like 20 won't make a difference, so.
20. Mayor, on this amendment, the Portland Mercado is a project of hacienda, CDC, and other community partners, and has been funded generously by the Portland Development Commission. Recently, the food trucks were vandalized, and someone broke into the food trucks, damaged the doors, stole property, did other bad things. A number of food trucks were knocked out of business for a couple of days. As part of the rebuilding, there is extensive damage to the food trucks and to the area. They have started a Kickstarter campaign and are receiving private contributions to help repair. I understand people are contributing between $5 and $500 towards this cause. But the reality is, these are hard-working immigrants, small businesses, who can't afford to be out of business for one or two days, and it is shameful that someone chose to damage their trucks, which is their livelihood. What we're proposing, Mayor, you and I are proposing, that we set aside the $20,000, that we ask the Portland Development Commission to determine the extent of the losses, less whatever insurance provides, and private fundraising, and that this money be used to help with the repairs. And of course, it would be my hope that we, not all the money would be, would be necessary to be expended. I spoke yesterday to the executive director of PDC. She's happy to play that role, to determine what the extent of the damages are, and then to oversee the distribution of these funds. And then it would be my intention to report back to council how these funds were expended.
That's great. Thank you. The only thing I would add to that good summary is that I was out at the groundbreaking for the first of the four projects in Lentz that are finally implementing the Lentz Action Plan last Sunday. And there was a great community gathering of all these folks that have worked for years on Lentz. I was joking with Ray Heights, some of you know is an activist in that neighborhood, that when he and I started talking about these projects, we both had dark brown hair. But nevertheless, after all this time and all this planning, they're finally happening, and so was this great celebration. And there were a bunch of people there from the Asian Health and Services Center who were talking about how wonderful the Mercado is. So, here we have the Asian community celebrating the Latino community's biggest accomplishment in community development. So, the fact that it has that kind of community support, Commissioner Fish, means that we should step up and help them make sure this place stays great. Okay, those two amendments are before us.
I just had a question of the sponsor.
Sure, please.
So, it is your intent that this is truly a one-time emergency appropriation, not to become an ongoing shadow appropriation?
Yes, and Commissioner Saltzman, thanks for raising that. And it's also an issue that our independent budget officer cares a lot about as well. This is a purely one-time grant to help some local small business with, deal with an extraordinary occurrence. This is not intended to be recurring budget ask.
It is for purposes of emergency repairs, so stated, so.
Thank you. I appreciate the question.
So, we'll take action on the first of these, put it on, put it before us, and then we can move on to the rest of them? So, other questions? We'll take testimony on everything, but we're going to put them on, all right, let's put them all on the table, then. We'll put them all on the table, then take testimony, and we can adopt them in order. Okay, let's take the next motion, please, on amendments.
Mayor, I move to make the following adjustment to the supplemental budget as proposed. Increase the Bureau programming expenses in the Portland Bureau of Transportation by $150,000 to provide minor repairs to recreational vehicles lived in by the homeless, allowing them to relocate or, at a minimum, make their vehicles safe for habitation, and to provide resources for dismantling of certain RVs. If approved, those dollars be used to recycle derelict RVs with low-level salvage value that are cost-prohibitive for owners to recycle. As a result, these RVs are often sold to auction for very minimal amounts, repeatedly cycled through the tow yards and back onto the streets of Portland. These vehicles are not safe for habitation, not be rehabilitated, impose an environmental hazard because of a range of fluids and substances that leak from them. PBOAT estimates this funding will allow the Bureau to dismantle 75 to 100 vehicles in the first year, or 800 to 1,000 per vehicle, with diminishing numbers in the following years. Based on initial projections, PBOAT plans to allocate $30,000 for repairs and $120,000 for dismantling and recycling.
I'll second that.
Second.
Okay.
Just as a clarification, no, but none of the vehicles that people are actually living in, regardless of whether they should be living there, they're not going to be towed and squashed.
These are vehicles that have already been towed, I think.
They've already been towed.
That's right. There's somebody, staff, staff here about this, but we got a presentation about this. It's my, my understanding, good, good question, Commissioner, let's make sure we understand this. My understanding is the vehicles involved are ones that have already been towed and that are coming out of a tow yard empty of people.
My question is, are they empty of people before they are towed?
Good question, and I don't know the answer to that, so.
Is Dave Betson here?
Yeah. Dave, are you here?
We're going to do a presentation on this?
Well, it looks like we ought to at least have questions before we put the amendment before us, so let's, let's get those questions asked and answered.
Hey, Betson, Bureau of Transportation, Commissioner. I'm sorry, I didn't hear your question over in the gallery.
With these vehicles, when they, are any vehicles towed to the tow yard that still have people in them? Are people ejected from them?
No, I know our towers, when they go out for a Van and Auto, if there's people in the vehicles, they will not tow them.
Thank you, Mr. Saltzman.
All right, so that amendment is in front of us. Stand by in case there are more questions after testimony. Now, Commissioner Saltzman, I believe you have an amendment?
Yes. I would move to make the following adjustment to the supplemental budget as proposed. Amend one regular full-time equivalent currently requested as a regular position to limited term in the Portland Housing Bureau's budget. This position will provide data collection and analysis services for the Joint Office of Homeless Services, and was intended to be a limited-duration request. And update Exhibits 1 to 5, 1 through 5 as needed to reflect this change.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All right.
Mayor, did we have a second on Novick's amendment?
Yes, I did, and he did too, so we have two of them. So, go ahead. All right. Okay, other proposed amendments to put on the table before we take the testimony?
I don't have a proposed amendment, but I just want to make it clear what's happening by adopting this budget. As you'll remember, Parks asked for 1 million, 1.6 million to, as a match for 7 million in FEMA money for repair of things that got dislodged in the, in the floods and the rains. The city budget office and the council, by adopting this budget, has directed Parks and me to spend, to use 1.2 million from the sale of the surplus property to the Housing Bureau, which I had been planning to use to either buy, acquire property in park-deficient areas or build a park in a park-deficient area. Instead, we've been asked to put that towards fixing the problems from the floods. And because the amount that we got from the sale to the Housing Bureau is 1.2 million, that leaves $478,641, which we don't have a match for, and which means that we would be leaving 1.4 million from the federal government on the table, and we wouldn't be able to do the projects. So, just wanted to make that quite clear, that, in my opinion, we should be repairing things, and we'll need to come to council to let you know what's not going to get repaired.
So, I don't think that's an outcome that I would like, but I guess I don't understand the timeline. So, by when must we put up all those match funds in order to gain all the federal dollars that we would be matching?
My understanding is there's 18 months to put that up, but I'm not sure when that 18-month window starts.
But the point is, I don't know where I'd get the other 400, nearly $500,000. I mean, it can come back in the spring.
Sure.
Yeah, I mean, I think your counsel.
The county, I think, has done an admirable job framing that concern, and I think we have time to address it. And in the interim, I'd also want to know if we have any flexibility with the windfall of SDC revenues we've received, whether there's some adjustments we can make in the budget, because one of the great benefits of this bull market is we're getting huge amounts of systems development charges to address something you and I care deeply about, which is building parks in East Portland. So, I'd want to know how that, how that balances out with this request.
Actually, well, thank you for bringing that up. We have already allocated $6 million of system development charge money to doing some work at Park Lane, Park, which is what the community's greatest desire out there. We would still need about $20 million for that, which we don't have. We've also allocated money for various other projects, and obviously, we can't use system development charges for doing repairs.
So, it might be useful to know that, that date? Is it July? Is it January 1 of 18? When is, when is that date? It would be useful to know that. And remind me again what the match ratio is? How many dollars?
It's 3 to 1, so it's nearly 1.5 million.
In my opinion, and I suspect the budget office might agree with this opinion, because I know how they think about money, it would be crazy to leave that kind of match unrequited. So, one way or another, I think the city should make sure we fund fully our side of that equation so that we get $3 for every one that we spend, because we don't get those opportunities very often. The question is just, when do we have to spend all those dollars in order to achieve that match? But we might need a budget note in order to make it clear that, well, maybe we don't have to have a budget note for council intent, but anyway, it would certainly be my hope and expectation that we do that.
We can get back in terms of when that timeline is up. And in the city budget office analysis, we actually suggested that Parks take some existing maintenance money in order to ensure that we get the match for those repairs, which, of course, would delay existing maintenance projects. So, there is a trade-off there, but we felt like the trade-off was manageable within those existing resources.
Right, well, we've got the boilers that were not funded in this bump either, and I do want to return to the 1.2 million from selling the park property to housing. I thought we were being entrepreneurial and collaborative, and would then help everybody out by having that money available for new parks. As I say, I know I don't have the votes for it, so we'll just move on.
All right, thank you. All right, other amendment suggestions or requests to staff? All right, then, let's please.
Mayor, I would like to ask Andrew to, what's your response to Commissioner Fritz's concern? And what, do you think that what we're doing in this bump is appropriate, and we can wait to get the, get the match later on? Or do you, I don't want to put you on the spot like this, but can you give the arguments, argument for putting us in the situation we're in now?
Yeah, specifically around this issue, yeah. We absolutely think we should capture all of the FEMA money that's available. When we looked at the entirety of all the requests on the table, including those from Parks, you know, in our view, it was, it was better to take the money from the existing sale to make sure we got that match, which there, the trade-off there, as the commissioner noted, is, is not, you know, expanding the park system. On the larger issue, one of the things that we've raised is the ongoing concern that as we expand the park system, we're shifting more general fund to operate and maintain those parks. So, we just want to be really clear about those decisions. But we suggested taking that funding and then, and then reallocating existing funding. So, I don't want to overshadow, there are trade-offs in that, but we felt like those trade-offs were the best way to repair the damage from the storm, and then continue to work on those other maintenance issues as we move forward.
Andrew, this is, for me, the first time this issue has been flagged, so no one has brought this to my attention before today. And if, that's, no one has brought it to my attention. And if this is something the commissioner in charge feels strongly about, then I agree with the mayor. I'd like to know what our options are going forward, and what the timeline is, and then whether we have other options. And it sounds like we have enough time to come up with a creative solution.
Commissioner Fish, I think you missed the work session. I think you were ill or traveling, so we did discuss that at the work session.
I'm just saying, it's the first time I've, it's been brought to my attention.
Again, my philosophy, and I think it's reflected in this proposal, is that when we get a match opportunity, we should step up and do it. If it's otherwise an investment the city would want to make, we're doing that with the Halpern sequence in this proposal, because the time right is right now. Either we do it or we don't. When that, we should not pass that milestone with this opportunity without funding the match. But the question is, when, how long does the council have? How many, how many more budget exercises will we go through before it's too late? And I think there's at least two. I think there's the spring bump and the next general fund budget, but it's worth checking. Maybe no.
And I'll just add, from what I know from the Bureau, Ryan Kinsler from the budget office, the project managers indicated that, I believe it's 18 months from the time of the event, that they would need to, to make a claim with FEMA for the reimbursement. So, that would be June of 2017 that they have to the timeline. They've also indicated, the Bureau's indicated, that the 1.2 million, the current estimates are an estimate. It could be less, it could be substantially more, so the full 1.6 million might not be needed after everything's all standard.
Mayor, can I, can I make a proposal?
Sure, please.
Because this is a fairly good conversation. Why don't we drop a budget note that says, in the spring bump?
Yeah.
Is this, what's the next bump?
Yeah, it'll be the spring bump, yeah.
Excuse me, spring bump. That in the spring bump, we would ask the budget office to come forward with options for how we can capitalize on this FEMA match, and, and work with the commissioner, the then commissioner in charge on developing options for how we can fund it. Does that, does that capture the spirit?
I like that idea.
Commissioner Fritz?
Thank you.
All right, so that's, got some consensus about that. Let's please do put that in the match. Obviously, that's before June, so, and just like we did with the Halpern sequence this time, we flagged that before. Now, we're paying for it. It would be the same kind of a process. Okay, good discussion, appreciate that, Commissioner Fritz. Any other questions? All right, now, let's move to testimony, please.
We have five people signed up. The first three, please come on up, are Charles Bridge Crane Johnson, Reedy Gragg, and Mary Eng.
Okay, come on up. Okay, Mr. Johnson, I think you're first.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, my name has been cited as Charles Bridge Crane Johnson. And in the context of this budget, it's a modification, it's important that we note what's really not a proud Portland tradition. In addition to abuse to protesters from police, we have a shameful tradition of compelling people to sleep outside on sidewalks, bridges, tents. For those who are really attentive, this discussion comes with a 48-page PDF. And while we are making strides, and we have a joint office with the county working on homelessness, we know that the de facto policy of this city is for 1,000-plus people to lay on our sidewalks and lay under our bridges, and with almost nothing, sometimes a tarp. They can't get that from any city agency if they don't have a tarp or blanket. They have to just hope that the Portland Rescue Mission hasn't run out. If the temperature gets to around 33 degrees, we might find some volunteers that will open buildings that they could go into until 7 o'clock in the morning, or maybe some places for a full day if it's really super cold. So, when we talk about this budget modifications and adjustments, it's important that we don't be overly congratulatory to ourselves about what we are accomplishing, because what we are accomplishing is deliberately, willfully choosing to treat local people worse than we treat refugees in foreign refugee camps and emergency service centers in Haiti, in, in people fleeing Syria. They have tents, they have camps with water brought in. The reason they don't have trash piling up and creating chaos in the Lentz neighborhood is because government agencies and NGAO agencies service those people by providing them with hygiene facilities and trash disposal, which we don't do. We will intentionally, this year, keep about 1,000 people from having any safe hygienic place to live. We've tried, we, you know, we've, hopefully, we'll be able to look back and say, well, it was a smaller number this year than it was in the previous year. But the truth is, we're choosing not to allocate services, resources, so that the hundreds of toilets that are in Veterans Memorial Coliseum and Moda Center that don't get used many nights of the year won't be available to those people. We haven't found a way, so let's just not be overly congratulatory. And let's admit that the Portland way, as talked about by Ellen Osnatch in front of Judge Simon, is not always such a great way. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next? Go ahead.
Thanks so much for including us. Randy Gregg from the Halpern Landscape Conservancy. I just wanted to briefly say thank you for including us in this budget. The 1.5 million, we believe... The 1.5 million, we believe, will be extremely well-spent. We have increasing momentum with our efforts to restore the fountains and to kind of bring them back to life in an increasingly growing neighborhood, more population, more businesses coming in, more buildings coming in. We have a growing embrace from the neighborhood. In fact, there is a sort of branding campaign of the major businesses there to rebrand the area as the Fountain District. So there's a real embrace of the plazas that hasn't been there for quite some time. And then also, I just came back from the American Society of Landscape Architects, where we did a presentation on our efforts there, and we had about 250 folks in the room from all around the country. And one of the preeminent architects, landscape architects of our time, Laurie Olin, who's done much work here in Portland, got up and talked about just how important these fountains have been to the profession, to influencing a whole generation of landscape architects to make more playful urban spaces. And so I recognize some really tough choices that you all have to make, and thanks for this vote in restoring these important resources to us. And lastly, I really want to thank the staff of Parks. We've worked through some really, really difficult budget choices, and, you know, they have been so fantastic to work with. It's been, you know, a hard grind, and we've got an established budget, and we're ready to roll. So thank you so much for your efforts.
Thank you, and Karen, and others who've worked so hard to get people to make commitments to match our money. Thank you. Okay? Next? Go ahead, please.
Hi, counsel. My name is Mary Rose Lenore Eng. Eng is Norwegian for meadow, and German for narrow, Chinese for something, too. So I just want to thank you for this microphone, for this timer, which reflects that I have 2 minutes and 43 seconds left. Thank you for Carla, all the work she does. Thank Robert King for always being so fantastic and kind to me and gracious. I want to thank our beautiful city attorney, Judy Prosper. We endured a very tough meeting last night. I want to thank you, Mayor Hales, and Ms. Fritz for being present for Mr. Simon. I want to thank the Mercado for really spicing up Lentz. I think it's so beautiful. I love the beauty of it and the beauty of the Latino activist movement as I knew it in Los Angeles. When my own family had abandoned me, I felt like the Latino community opened their arms to me and treated me so kindly. I want to thank Ms. Laura Vanderlin, who is of Mexican nationality originally, before she came to America and had some beautiful black grandkids and black daughters. And I think, in some ways, we've got to realize our multicultural landscape involves very complicated families. I have black cousins. I want to thank Abel Gordley for her work on the COAB and congratulate her on her Portland Development Commission house that she's obtained from her house sale. That's very interesting. Some people are viewing it as a kickback or cashola. I'm not going to make a decision on that yet, but I want to point towards Angela Grabbin. Angela Grabbin is working with Open Government, and I noticed your Open Data Transparency Initiative. And Angela Grabbin would like you guys to give Laura Vanderlin's iPhone back, as well as unblock her on Twitter, because open data means that if we have an emergency, like we did when I was scheduled to speak, and was actually on a bus when that explosion happened downtown, you want to be able to reach your citizens. They may be looking towards Twitter, that may be their main agenda. So with budget, make some budget for your own investment in your own spirits. I suggest yoga and meditation. I suggest you resign, once again, Charlie Hales, on the O'Day shooting. I'll go with you to Europe if you want to run away with me. And we can go to the Tate. I love the Tate Modern, I love the Tate Galleries. We could, I don't know, do something humanitarian, go rescue refugees in the Mediterranean. But there's a point where city leadership requires dedication to the principle of riot prevention. And when you push people too far with not respecting their need for good leadership, you have to take accountability, sir, for the things you blame on other people when you pepper spray amputees and babies and children and women. And I don't condone rude or poor behavior, but I do recognize that we have a standard of decency that we need to ensure for all members of this community, including our G4S Guards, including Michael Cohen, who I understand has been exposed for having some background problems and some brutality here. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, please.
Yes, my name is Lightning. I represent Lightning Watchdog PDX on the Mercado food carts. I have a problem. My understanding, you said that was a grant? And my problem is, is that if the insurance comes through and covers all the costs, will the grant be reimbursed back to the city? My understanding would...
It's this net of insurance, so it's a pool of money. I don't want to interrupt you.
No, that's fine, thank you.
But it's a great question, as always. They have, some of the small businesses have insurance, others don't. So the idea would be, for those expenses that are not covered by some other source, we would provide the grant money to help them. And while I've asked for $20,000, I anticipate that we won't expend the entire $20,000, and we'll have PDC administer it so that there's a report back to council about what was a covered expense and what wasn't.
Okay, very good. Now, the issue on the Portland Parks, on Commissioner Fritz's position on this, is that, in my opinion, with a match of three to one in dealing with FEMA, and as you know, things can come up that can change funding all the time, I mean, new administration, other disasters in other areas. And in my opinion, when you have a three-to-one match, you want to move in on that immediately because that opportunity can disappear. And you don't want to hesitate. You want to put up that funding, and it sounds like you're able to do it in some manner, but to extend this out, in my opinion, could jeopardize the overall ability to get that money in the future. And that's just my opinion, because things change all the time on getting funding. You want to move on that fast, get that into place. So my position is to try to move some funding in that area immediately and then focus on that FEMA money. Issue number two on the RV situation, it's my understanding when an RV is towed off the streets, it goes into the tow company's property, and basically, it's kind of their problem. And as you know, when you get into the salvage scrap of RVs, they're not really something like Snitzer Steel are really going to have an interest in, but there's a lot of headache into that in insulation, environmental issues, and all that other stuff that can come into play when you step in position on that. In my opinion, set it aside to the tow companies, that's your problem, that's what you specialize in, and you handle it, plain and simple. Keep the city out of that entirely. The other issue, again, on transportation, and it's nothing real negative, I don't like to see a lot more employees being hired at this time. I think we're in a bubble that's going to, we're going to see that when new administration takes position. And we need to be very cautious right now and begin to look at thinning out the labor force and not adding more. That's my opinion, but I think in, within the next six to 12 months, we'll see the reality. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning.
Yes, my name is Robert West. I'm going to film the police 911, and I want to bring up the RV issue. A lot of these RVs that the police are towing and meter maids are towing are actually owned and operated, they're people's homes. And just because they're not there at the time of the tow truck doesn't mean that they're just abandoned. People can't afford to put them on private property and stuff like that. You're losing a lot of RV space, and they're putting different things, building small houses and stuff like that. So as you squeeze out RV space, people wind up with RVs out on the street. You're giving the police, you're giving the tow, or you're giving the meter maids open cars to go out and just tow these vehicles. We shouldn't encourage tow companies, police, or meter maids to tow these people's homes. If I were to go over and remove your home, you'd be very upset. And these people get upset, too. I mean, everything they own is in their RV. It gets towed, and then they can't get a hold of their personal property, and they lose everything. And that's not right. That's not fair. And some of these people that live in RVs actually work and stuff like that. What the city calls abandoned is someone's home. And that should, and at no point should the city put out any kind of money to dismantle or take someone's home unless the city can show for a fact that someone's not living in there. And that's what I wanted to bring up.
Thank you. Thanks very much.
Janice Thompson and Joe Walsh.
Come on up, please. I think you're first.
Janice Thompson, Citizens Utility Board of Oregon. I'm here with some suggestions related to the bump process and the utility bureaus. You know, it's, you know, it's taken me a little while to get, you know, sort out this process. It's been doable, especially since, you know, oftentimes, more typically, there's minor tweaks coming up. It's a little bit more challenging this time with the relatively atypical addition of several positions in the Water Bureau's bump request. And if it's challenging for me, it seems like it's fair to say it's probably even trickier for the pub with their monthly meeting schedule. So I've got three suggestions. One is more proactive discussion by the utility bureaus about bump requests in general, but especially if they're kind of atypical, or more on the atypical end of the spectrum, with both Cub and Pub. Sharing the CBO analysis of the utility bureau's requests with Cub and Pub. I mean, I was, last Thursday, I was watching online, couldn't be here in person, though I understand that pub representatives were, members were, which was great. But, for example, I couldn't, online, various information that was being discussed wasn't up yet. And then also, have Cub and Pub, as has been occurring in the regular work sessions, also be a participant at the bump work sessions, kind of akin to having the Budget Advisory Committee, whose oversight has a little bit more of a general fund focus, was at your meeting last Thursday. I say, I was definitely listening. I know some pub members were here as well, but not in a way that provided an opportunity at that point to ask questions.
So, Mayor, if I could just respond, and thank you, Janice, for all three suggestions. On the first two, we have to do a better job, and the excuse can't be that you meet, that the pub meets monthly. And while this is not a structural change of any note to our budget, I think any change that appears in a bump should be reviewed by the pub. So I agree with your first two suggestions. And Mayor, on the third, I wish I had raised that during the bump, because we did have the co-chairs here of the pub. And I would hope that in the, with the next administration, that we formally invite the co-chairs and the representative of the Cub to sit at the table, akin to our citizen budget folks, when any bump request involving utilities is discussed. And I would hope that that's something my colleagues would support. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Janice. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Joe Walsh. I represent Individuals for Justice. We objected a process that you go through. When you do the amendments, you completely confuse everybody. You're the only ones that really know what's going on, because you've looked at the amendments. I hope that you've had some conversations about the amendments, but then you put them on the table here, and you go through two or three amendments, and then you take a vote. And nobody knows what you're doing. That's why you get it, F on your transparency. That's one of the reasons, and that's so simple to resolve. You know, if you're going to do amendments on the budget, especially the budget, and you want people to understand what you're doing, then hold it over for a week or so and then have another conversation where you have community input, so the community gets some time to look at it and try to figure out what you're doing.
Mr. Walsh, we discussed all...
Look, there should be, wait, wait, wait. There should be no separation between you and the community. And up here, when I sit here and I listen to you, that's a thought that goes through my mind. They think they know more than everybody out here, and that's not true. You know more than I do, obviously, but you don't know more than everybody, so give everybody a chance to talk to you. So when you do these amendments, hold it over. I don't know if you're going to vote on this today. That's what you usually do. You listen to us, three minutes of the, boom, red light, get out of here, vote, aye, aye, aye. You sound like pirates. That's what you always remind me of. Aye, 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 aye. Five ayes. Hold it over and let the community come in and talk to you, because we are in trouble. We all acknowledge that. We're all struggling trying to figure out, how in God's name, we bridge the gap? And the gap is getting bigger, not smaller, throughout the whole country and here, here especially. I had one of your staffers ask me last week, Joe, can we hold a meeting without a demonstration? And I said, it's up to the mayor. Stop being a jerk. And you will not have demonstrations. Do you see demonstrations here today? You have not been a jerk yet. So please, Mr. Novick, Commissioner Novick.
Mr. Walsh, I just wanted to tell you that we discussed all of these amendments except for the Mercado proposal at a work session last week. I also wanted to say that I appreciate your referring to us as pirates, because I think that's the most complimentary thing you've ever said about the city council.
Okay, we can't attend all of these meetings. The public cannot attend them. They see this meeting as the most important, because you take the votes. Okay? So you can't say to me, well, we did it on the work session. You know, we don't have the time to do it. I'm retired. I don't have the time to follow all the committees around. We can't do it. We are here, and I know that's at a disadvantage, because there's so much work done before you even get it. However, this is the community speaking to you, not just me, but a lot of people.
Thank you very much. Thank you. All right, anyone else on this item? All right, so first, we ought to take action on the amendments as they were proposed, so let's take Commissioner Fish's first amendment, which is the... Ma'am, you may not interrupt the council meeting. If you interrupt again, you'll be excluded. You will be excluded if you interrupt. Okay, let's take Commissioner Fish's first amendment, which is the three positions in the Water Bureau. Let's take a vote on that, please.
Novick?
Aye.
Fritz?
I thought the parents went "are," not "aye." Aye.
Fish?
Thank you, colleagues. Aye.
Saltzman?
I just wanted to thank the Water Bureau and Commissioner Fish's office for providing me a detailed analysis of this amendment. Aye.
Hales?
Aye. Okay, now we'll take up the second one, which is the Mercado emergency repairs, $20,000.
Novick?
Aye.
Fritz?
Aye.
Fish?
I want to thank my colleagues on this, and I also appreciate the feedback that the mayor and I got. We will administer these funds wisely, we will provide an accounting, and we will make sure these funds are net of other funds that the aggrieved small businesses receive from insurance and other sources. This is our way as a body, however, to forcefully speak out against someone who would vandalize the trucks and the small businesses of immigrant entrepreneurs. It is shameful, and I'm proud of this council for stepping up. Aye.
Saltzman?
Aye.
Hales?
You know, there was this, obviously, last week while we were having this council meeting, we had this huge disaster in northwest Portland, and I'm happy to see our city bureaus coming together to work on how do we respond to that. So when we have a situation in our small business community like this, one way or another, we ought to try to be there, and I appreciate this very much.
Mayor, can I just also acknowledge that, driving back from the site visit to report to you, your office immediately said, cosponsor, you want to move on this, and thank you for your leadership.
Thank you, and it's a good piece of work. Aye. Okay, let's take Commissioner Novick's amendment with respect. Notice there are questions about it. There was testimony, which I think we can answer as we vote, but very good points made. Commissioner's Novick's amendment about the RV program.
Novick?
Aye.
Fritz?
Aye.
Fish?
Aye.
Saltzman?
Aye.
Hales?
Point was raised here that I think I want to emphasize, and that is, we ought to be exercising... exercising, and I hope and expect that we are, great sensitivity about what happens when we do tow somebody's vehicle, whether it's their automobile or their RV. And I expect and will hold people accountable that we do that. Once one has been towed, then what I believe the intent of this program is, is to do triage and say, that one can be repaired and used as housing for people that are desperate for housing. Good, that's what we should be doing. The ones that are beyond repair are the ones that should be, obviously, recycled. So that's our expectation about this program. It's a little bit of a pilot project. Obviously, the council's going to want to hear back about how it's working as a program and how it's working for the people affected, but I think it's worth a try. Thank you. Aye. Okay, Commissioner Saltzman's amendment, one FTE added to the Housing Bureau's budget.
Novick?
Aye.
Fritz?
Aye.
Fish?
Aye.
Saltzman?
Aye.
Hales?
Aye. Okay, and that's all the amendments, I believe. So then, let's take a vote, please, on the full supplemental budget as amended.
Novick?
Aye.
Fritz?
Well, thank you, Mayor, for your last full budget submission and for many of the things that are in it. It is an emergency ordinance, so I will be voting for it, despite some of the concerns I've raised. And I'm particularly pleased that the council agreed to continue implementing the policy that I led, dedicating 50% of all ending fund balance and one-time money, which this is, to capital projects in transportation parks and emergency preparedness. It's really important to see these maintenance needs funded in the bump, and disappointing to see that many others still need funding. I'm particularly grateful that there are funds for additional park ranges to help patrol along the spring water corridor in East Portland. I was concerned about the Better NATO seasonal, because it seemed like $350,000 for one summer of temporary bollards seemed a bit high. So thank you for your staff letting me know what it's for. It's actually for five years, so about $70,000 a year. I am still a bit concerned that the administrative costs and outreach and contingency are almost $150,000, so that's over 40% of the allocation. So that's still of concern. And obviously, I'm glad that the Halpern partnership has been forged and that you've been able to get the property owners to pitch in so that that lovely resource can be preserved and maintained, and glad for the 1.5 million. What I've been doing, when I get requests from affluent neighborhoods to fund something and to partner with parks, I try to find the money with system development charges or other things to, at the same time, provide improvements in neighborhoods that don't have parks. So I am disappointed that the council is choosing, basically, to take the money from the sale of the property to housing, which will be bringing to you on November 16th, taking that money as the match for the repairs in Forest Park and elsewhere, which then leaves me with not the 1.2 million that I was hoping to get to put to parks in East Portland. But thank you again, Mayor. I appreciate your partnership. Aye.
Fish?
Mayor, I want to join Commissioner Fritz in acknowledging this is your last official budget act, and thank you for the skillful way you've handled this and other budgets. I think for a casual observer, this seems to be relatively drama-free, but we have to make tough choices around competing requests and values. So I want to thank you. I thought this was a particularly effective budget modification process. I want to thank Andrew and his team, because they do all the hard work and make it look easy. I want to thank my colleagues for the discussions we've had and the consensus that we arrived at, and I want to thank the public for helping to shape this. There's a number of things in here that I really care about. I'm pleased that we're carrying over money to help Dan fund winter shelter. Winter shelter is a basic service we need to fund, and the partnership between the city and the county is bearing fruit. I'm really pleased that Steve is getting some money to make progress on Vision Zero. You don't have to just be one of the two people up here whose lives have been touched by tragedy to understand that Vision Zero has to be at the center of what we do as a city. And people should have an absolute right to expect that the sidewalks and streets are safe. And Steve, you've been a champion for Vision Zero, and it is an audacious goal, and it's a goal that will be very hard to reach, but it's a goal that we'll get closer to if we make these kinds of investments. And I particularly appreciate all the community partners who educated me about the benefits of Better NATO on a seasonal basis, and the imperative on an equity basis of going out to East Portland and addressing this challenge where people are dying at an alarming rate. I want to thank our friends from the Halpern Conservancy. What Commissioner Fritz and I, and all of us who've had the honor of being commissioners in charge, know, is that the needs of our system outstrip our ability to pay for them. So when public-spirited individuals and companies come forward and say, we're going to contribute through a partnership for the benefit of our city, we need to embrace that and say thank you. And I deeply appreciate that Commissioner Fritz is investing the bulk of our resources in the places that have gone without for so long. And one of her legacies will be a developed park system in East Portland that 10 years ago was a dream, but there was no real path forward. But it is also important that when we have a master work like the Halpern Sequence, that we invest in maintaining it. I believe it'll be another destination place in our city when it's restored. We can't do this without private partners. Randy, thank you for literally writing the book. Karen and Randy and all the partners, thank you for raising the money. And I also want to acknowledge something Commissioner Fritz said. It was under her leadership that we took the step of saying 50% of these funds would be dedicated to major maintenance. And that, of course, responded to a public that said, we're not investing enough in maintenance, but it was a kind of symbolic and substantive gesture that has borne fruit, and millions of dollars is now going to major maintenance that otherwise wouldn't have. And I think we owe her a debt on that. And finally, on the Mercado, the one question I've received in the last 24 hours in terms of pushback is, why would we invest in the Mercado, this group of small business people and not others? The answer is, we do invest in others. Under this mayor, we have invested a ton of money through the Portland Development Commission in supporting small business, access to capital, storefront improvements, investments in infrastructure. That's all in aid of small business. You've also increased funding for the Venture Portland, which helps the 50 neighborhood business districts prosper. When there's an emergency, we always step up and ask what we can do, as you indicated along 23rd Street. And I thank you and Dan for the prompt way you were on-site and that you were reaching out to folks. So the Mercado is a project of this city. It's part of our core strategy of equity and opportunity. And when someone vandalized those trucks, they struck at the heart of something we're trying to do, which is to give people that have been shut out a chance to prosper. And the modest investment we made there in helping new immigrants chase a dream is something we should be all proud of, and this modest investment is a way of saying shame on the person or persons that tried to prevent them from earning a living. And I'm proud to be on a council that would act to remedy that wrong. Again, Mayor, thank you for your leadership. And Andrew, the ending fund balance is just under $2 million. You said you wanted us to keep a reserve. We could have spent that money, but we've shown the discipline of keeping it in a rainy day account if we need it down the road, and I'm pleased that we've done that in this budget as well. Aye.
Saltzman?
Aye.
Hales?
Well, some people say budgets are boring, and they might be to many people, but I have, like Mayor Katz did, put a lot of my time and effort into the city's budget during the time that I've served this city as mayor. So this is my last opportunity to do that, and I'm very proud of this one, even though it's obviously the smaller element of the budget process compared to the big annual budget. And that's consisted of both emergency response, the first big budget we worked on was one that was $21 million in the red when we started. And we have done well together, I think, in trying to make these budget decisions. So I want to thank my colleagues for good work. And you're right, it sometimes appears like there's no drama about the budget, but there is, because as you can tell, the people are passionately concerned about serving the community, and we do that in lots of different ways, and there's never enough money to do everything that we want. I also want to second the commendations to you, Amanda, for having this policy here that when we have extra money, we spend at least half of it on capital investment. That's just good management, and you've put that into our DNA as a city, and it's very good that that's how we operate. I'm very proud of some of the elements of this budget. I mean, the fact that we are restoring the Halpern Sequence with people that have worked so hard to make that happen. You know, the parks and fountains of our city, they may happen to be located in one particular neighborhood. I have a particular love for Laurelhurst Park. I don't live in that neighborhood anymore, but that's where my kids first wandered around a city park. So whenever I go there, I see my kids on cardboard sliding down the hill in the snow. And so that park is a treasure for everybody, whether they live in that neighborhood or not. And it's the same with the Halpern Sequence. So I think it's a proud moment when we invest in those places that make Portland— Portland. I'm very happy that we're fixing the southwest community center roof, although frustrated that we had to, because when I was the Parks Commissioner, we passed the first bond, and you've helped us pass the second one, Commissioner, that started reinvesting in our park system. And every time I go in one of those community centers, I say, that was good work. And it's always, they're always full of life and activity, and so we've got to make sure that that sticks around. So putting that building right is something that we simply must do. I'm very happy about Better NATO, and by the way, in terms of community involvement, I want to thank the hundreds of people who let us know that that's a priority for them in this city. It really helped, I think, make the case that having more safe places to bike and expanding the public realm for bicycles in this city is something that we're still committed to. And Better NATO, this version of it, is a step in that direction. And then finally, this investment in Vision Zero is something that I really want to commend you, Commissioner Novick, and the Transportation Bureau for making a priority. You know, gang violence is still a serious problem in this city, although it's down 20% from last year. We've had 1,069 shots fired, 39 people wounded, two people killed. We've had, I think, 15 homicides in this city, but we've killed 34 of our fellow citizens with cars. And that's the number-one threat to public safety in our city. We had Vaughn Langinus, the mother of foul and smart, here at this table a few weeks ago, talking about the hole in her heart from her daughter's death on Hawthorne when she was run over by a reckless driver. So Vision Zero is real, and it's human, and it matters, and that's why I'm very proud that we're making that investment as well. Budgets are how you put values into action. This is good action, and I'm very proud of it. Thank you all very much for our work on this. Andrew, you have been a pleasure to work with. You get to work with really smart people at this table, and you're one of them. And the folks that you've assembled in our budget office are the best in the business, as it was just, I think, validated by the Bloomberg Foundation in the recognition for the work that we're doing on data and open government. But just the quality of analysis that goes into this budget process, the coherent philosophy about spending money intelligently, well, and prudently, that you represent every time in every meeting, public or private, is something that's a real asset to the city. So I want to commend you and the city budget office for serving us and the whole community very well. Finally, my own staff has worked a long time on budget issues, finding time to do that in the midst of everything else. So Tara and to all the folks in our office, thank you for good work as well. Very proud of this day. Aye. Thank you very much. Okay, let's move on, please, to the next item on the list, which is another happy moment, 1185.
Accept Salmon Safe certification for the city of Portland.
Okay. Come on up, Ms. Anderson, and let me say that, again, this is a proud day for us as a city. In 2013, I made a pledge at World Environment Day that we would become a salmon-safe city. And now we've done it. We're the first salmon-safe certified municipality in the country. We've made a commitment to do what we do in terms of public works and investments and maintenance in a way that actually protects the fish that is the symbol for many people of our part of the world, certainly for native people it is, and for the rest of us as well. So I want to thank our bureau directors who are here and the staff who have been working on this, and to getting us to the point that we're the first and the best, and it's always nice when Portland is in that place. So thank you very much. Susan, I think you're on first.
Thank you. Good morning, Mayor. Counsel Susan Anderson, Director of the Bureau of Planning and Sustainability. And with me are Leah Treet, Transportation Director, and Jane Bicari from BES, my partners on many different projects. Today, we're pleased to bring you this report on the city's Salmon Safe program. BPS acted, as we often do on a lot of different kinds of projects, as the convener, the nexus, and we worked with staff from several different bureaus to get through the certification process. More than a dozen different people from several different bureaus were involved. I'm going to briefly list all their names quickly, just their first names from the different bureaus. And if you're here, could you stand up or wave or something so council can recognize your hard work on this effort? So the list includes Caitlin and Melissa from BES. Mike from Water Bureau, Rich Grant from Transportation, Greg and Sean from Fire, Don and John from Fleet Services, Stacy and Larry from Procurement, Jamie and Sarah from Facilities, and from BPS, Debbie Bischof and Roberta Jortner. In addition, Mike Abade and the Parks Bureau has been working on Salmon Safe for years, and maybe even back when you were on council originally. When they first came out with Salmon Safe, it was something that the Parks Bureau at that time embraced. They're seen as a model across the country. In addition, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention that this effort was made possible in part by a grant from the Spirit Mountain Community Fund. And so we want to thank Spirit Mountain. Again, another partnership where we looked at, we wanted to do this work, but we wanted to build some kind of partnership with the community in order to be able to do it. So the report that you have in front of you was completed by Salmon Safe. Their science team did interviews with our staff. They examined city policies, our programs. They went out to various sites and facilities, and together, we all identified various ways and options to improve our policies and practices. The report outlines how each bureau is going to focus on different practices, everything, and they'll talk a little bit more about it, from stormwater runoff to water efficiency, pesticide reduction, water quality protection, and other work. So again, the five bureaus that were participating were BES, Transportation, the Water Bureau, Fire and Rescue, and OMF. You know, I think we're going to see this certification pay off in some really specific ways. One of the things it's going to do is allow us to walk our talk. We spend a lot of time working with other companies and industries throughout the community in terms of resource conservation and watershed health. We need to be able to say, we're actually doing what we're telling other people to do. This will help us to be more transparent, and it will provide some very clear standards. So to close, I just wanted to say that, again, Salmon Safe has been an opportunity for the bureaus to work together. We've learned a lot together, and I think it's another opportunity where, when that happens, the people meet and they actually begin to form relationships, which then advances the work in those bureaus as they begin to share information on all sorts of different kinds of practices. So I'm going to turn it over to Leah.
Great, thank you. Leah Treet, Director of the Portland Bureau of Transportation. And we see Salmon Safe certification as an opportunity to further improve the environmental safeguards that PBOT already takes during our operations. My bureau currently meets the majority of the Salmon Safe requirements, but we see the biggest return on investment for this program in improving our facilities. In particular, we're looking forward to developing a site master plan in coordination with city fleet to upgrade our maintenance operations facilities. Many of the conditions for Salmon Safe certifications would be addressed in our site master plan and the subsequent development, and the master plan will include a comprehensive stormwater management plan for the maintenance yards. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on behalf of Salmon Safe.
Good morning, Mayor Haroldson. Commissioners, for the record, I'm Jane Bicari. I am the Watershed Services Manager for the Bureau of Environmental Services. On behalf of BES, I'm really pleased to be here today to celebrate Portland's certification as the first, and hopefully not the last, Salmon Safe city. The Salmon Safe certification, as Susan explained, provides an independent third-party validation of the, that the way that we do business is protective of the environment so that we don't create problems for future generations. Imagine if we had this kind of certification when the city built its first combined sewer, and we made a decision to have overflows go into the Willamette. So we're pleased that Salmon Safe has recognized leadership, the value, and the benefits of our work to date. Halport and Kentucky's business directly impacts both the Willamette and the Columbia River watersheds, including the salmon that swim past the city and swim up to the headwater streams and then pass back through the city towards the Pacific Ocean. Environmental Services is responsible for managing wastewater and stormwater treatment and, oops, lost my name, wastewater treatment and the overall health of our watersheds, making sure that we continually protecting public, we continually protect public health, water quality, and the environment. The Salmon Safe report commends our current efforts and identifies opportunities for improvement and enabling us to strengthen our commitment to environmental leadership. BES has worked very closely with Salmon Safe to meet their requirements within the current work plans and business model that we have today. In other words, Salmon Safe conditions are ways for us to improve existing plans and programs and to have better outcomes for salmon. They are not new or extraneous efforts. One example of this is Condition 5, which requires an objective assessment of our in-stream projects. BES will update the model that we have used in the past and we're intending to update in the next five years. to update in the next five years. However, as a result of the Salmon Safe report, we are proposing to accelerate the update of this model and to use it differently this time around, in a way that complements and informs our stormwater system planning efforts and prioritizes coupled stormwater and in-stream improvements. Moreover, we will use the results to fine-tune our adaptive management efforts so that we're constantly improving and using ratepayer dollars more efficiently. Environmental Services is looking forward to working with Salmon Safe and our sister bureaus to improve stormwater planning and prioritization, project evaluation and monitoring, and erosion control coordination. These recommendations converge seamlessly with the ongoing efforts that we have to use ratepayer dollars wisely. Salmon Safe certification will keep Environmental Services striving to operate and plan ahead with sustainability and low-impact goals in mind. We also hope that Portland's Salmon Safe certification will encourage other public utilities to employ business models and incorporate sustainability and good watershed practices. Salmon Safe is a point of pride for the community, and it also enables us to meet our regulatory mandates, especially as they become stricter in the future. Adapting Salmon Safe practices today will hopefully become conventional and guide our business practices in the future. We're really proud today that our city has received the certification, and thanks so much for your time.
Thank you all. Questions for this panel of leaders inside city government?
Mr. Preview, Mayor, we have a time certain scheduled for, I think, the day after the election.
Remember night.
Yeah. It'll, everyone will be exhausted from late-night parties, but we'll be presenting an update and a closeout on the Crystal Springs Initiative.
Oh, yeah. Great.
And I think there's no current initiative of BES that more clearly frames, you know, the focus now on salmon and the health of our salmon, and the dividends to our watershed and our community. So we look forward to that.
Here, here. Thank you. Thank you all very much. We have another panel here. Dan Kent from Salmon Safe and Jim Berno from Willamette Valley Vineyards. Welcome. Nice to have you here.
Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Dan Kent, Executive Director and Co-Founder of Salmon Safe. Congratulations today to the City of Portland, the first city in the world to complete a comprehensive assessment with an independent, third-party verification organization with the goal of reducing its impacts in its watershed. Working at sites across the city for more than three years with our independent science team to evaluate the operations of city bureaus with respect to impacts on the Willamette River, we saw firsthand the commitment of city workers to ensuring that Portland does its part to protect our urban watershed. I want to extend Salmon Safe's appreciation, and also the appreciation of our independent science team, to the five service delivery bureaus that were mentioned by Susan, and we're the core implementation team for this project. And also to the Bureau of Planning and Sustainability for coordinating with Salmon Safe and our science team over the last few years. And I want to thank you, Mayor Hales, in particular, for your World Environment Day challenge to the city to follow the lead of Portland Parks and seek Salmon Safe certification across core facilities and operations. Salmon Safe has been here before, in front of the council, in our longtime work with Portland Parks, as was mentioned. But just as a reminder, we're an environmental certification organization focused on water quality protection and habitat conservation. Salmon Safe provides rigorous third-party audits of an organization's watershed impacts, and we also provide the framework of an environmental management system for reducing those impacts over time. For Portland, our work started with the comprehensive gap analysis of citywide programs, policies, and plans related to environmental management, and then expanded to bureau-by-bureau inspections all across the city, looking at sites ranging from streets under construction to operations yards, to motor pool fueling stations, to fire station equipment washing, to graffiti removal, and countless other practices and sites that have the potential to contribute polluted runoff to the Willamette River. Today, we are honored to present the Salmon Safe Cross Bureau Certification Report, which you have in front of you. The report includes conditions for certification that are the actions that the city will take with respect to continuous improvement. That means further efficiency with respect to water conservation, for example, and many other examples of ongoing improvement in environmental management. Portland is the first city to achieve Salmon Safe certification, but the impact of Portland's commitment is even greater because it joins a movement in the private sector. Salmon Safe started in the late 1990s, working first with vineyards in the Willamette Valley, and we're now working with more than 300 vineyards and wineries from British Columbia down into the Rogue Basin of Southern Oregon. Jim Berno, founder of Willamette Valley Vineyards, is here today to talk about his work with Salmon Safe over nearly two decades. In our work on the urban landscape, Salmon Safe principles have been embraced by leaders ranging from Nike at its world headquarters campus, to Gertie Needland, to Lewis &amp; Clark College, to Portland State University. In Seattle, developer Vulcan is working to develop an entire district of the city, a whole neighborhood at South Lake Union, applying Salmon Safe principles in large-scale development. As we've worked through this first-ever third-party assessment of how a major city impacts its watershed, we've realized that Portland is just the beginning. Every city impacts its watershed, and it is our intention that Portland can serve as a model for other West Coast cities that will be challenged by Mayor Hales to also achieve Salmon Safe certification. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Berno, welcome.
Thank you for this opportunity to speak to you. My name is Jim Berno. I'm the founder of Willamette Valley Vineyards, just south of Salem, but in this market area. You know, the Salmon Safe has been leading this environmental sustainable effort for nearly 20 years. And over that time, as he's mentioned, there's now almost 350 vineyards from British Columbia, Idaho, Washington, Oregon, and now SO certified, through several different certifying agencies that are scientific, third-party, audited organizations. One is called LIVE, Low Input Vediculture Analysis. That's the largest. But there's others, like Oregon TIL. It's an organic certifying organization. And also Demeter, which is a certification for biodynamic practices in the vineyards. But all these lead up to preserving and maintaining health in the soil, and also in all of our waterways and in our habitats. In addition, we also have worker provisions that are, provide for safety and involvement in the decision-making that relate to our practices. I did bring a few examples just to show you how we tell this story. And the reason why I wanted to come today was because this is a big deal. This is a really big deal. Because when Portland, the City of Portland, takes this step to tell the world of the commitment that you're making, it helps all of us who are following these practices and trying to convince people of their value. It gives us a great way of telling that story. The, you know, years ago, people would buy products or services based upon price and value. But more and more, people are making a choice based upon price, value, and values. And the largest part of where we get support for our products and services is entrepreneurs here in the Northwest and in Oregon, comes from people who travel here and experience Oregon firsthand. And now they'll be able to make a decision to travel to America's only city that is salmon-safe. So thank you so much.
Thank you. So what do you have in your show-and-tell bag there? The product itself.
Wow.
This is a neckfinger that we, can we use plus? You can turn the bottle over.
All right.
Wow.
I don't think we'll drink this right here, right now. So the label says, Salmon Safe on the label. This wine has been created using healthy agricultural practices that help keep our rivers clean enough for salmon to thrive. So we should be looking for that label on the wine that we buy, should we not? Here, here.
Mayor, I wanted to add that, over this time, this last 20 years, Oregon, as you know, produces actually a fairly small fraction of the world that's produced in the nation and, and actually what's consumed in the nation. But the reviewing organizations like Wine Spectator Magazine, even though only about 1% of Oregon wines are the ones that are reviewed in Wine Spectator Magazine, over the highest percentage of scores above 90% of the scores in Wine Spectator, approaches about 20% of the wines reviewed. So these practices not only are important to our health and to all the health of all living creatures, but it actually, following these practices leads to quality, and it leads to a much better outcome for consumers.
That's great. Thank you both very much.
Thank you.
It's an honor. Thank you so much. Yeah, let's suspend the rules. I think this is a big deal. Okay, we may have some folks that want to speak on this resolution before we take action. Do you have anybody signed up?
One person, Mary Ng.
Okay, Mary, come on up.
Thank you. Hadi, what was your company name, sir? I just wanted to thank you very much. That was.
Willamette Valley Vineyards.
Valley Vineyards. Thank you so much for your presentation. You know, there's a little funny joke I have to tell you. Because I'm a police brutality activist, I was framed with a false weapon so I could be beaten up on the steps of City Hall, and that was a corkscrew. So now we have the missing ingredient of the corkscrew plot. Of course, the DA had to drop the charges because it was a fake sting to get revenge on me for being an ADA advocate. So I find it hilarious because I love organics, even though I'm not a drinker, and I don't bring corkscrew. You can search my bags if you want to. No corkscrew in there. But we do worry about alcoholism with the police chief, and so does the DOJ. And that's kind of an interesting coincidence. And I don't know which one of you drink or have drinking problems, but I do want you to show some seriousness about your job and seriousness about tourism. We had an international boycott of Portland declared by Shaun King, a pretty famous activist, who's on a lot of media channels due to the brutality out there. So out of one side of your mouth, you may be talking about biodynamics and water preservation and respect of the salmon. I just want to really put out there that I am vegan in diet. I don't eat cheese, milk, honey. I don't believe in eating animals. Sometimes wine processing really needs a higher level of certification to be certified vegan, because some of the clarification processes with wine make it actually not vegan. So I want to say that just because you're vegan, or go to Veg Fest, or support vegetarianism, or nonviolence in your way of living, doesn't mean that you can't understand and respect the spiritual aspects of the relationship with the land and the water and the salmon that was arising in the indigenous people who were colonialized and exploited through this nasty pattern of dominance, destruction, industrialization, pollution, and bioaccumulation. And the principle of bioaccumulation is that every bit of smog, or lead, or toxics, or pharmaceuticals that are in our water and our air will soak into organic matter. So that if a fish eats another fish that has bioaccumulated toxicity, you have toxic buildup. And right now, we have a system of overfishing in our, in our oceans that has not replenished the stocks. So I have 29 full seconds. I thank you so much for not being rude today, Charlie. What got into you? Did your city attorneys talk to you? Who do they work for? I mean, who is the city? Are we the city, or are you the city? Because we are ultimately their actual clients, we, the people of Portland. You represent us, and you are our servant, and we have asked you to resign for your failures of leadership, not just so you haven't done good things. And I want to be positive. I said I love you, and I said resign. So I'm saying, resign, and I love you. It's in your best interest.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Go ahead. Welcome.
Yes, my name is Lightning. I represent Lightning Watchdog PDX. One of the points that I liked being brought up was on the Salmon Safe certification toward new development projects, and such as Paul Allen at Vulcan Real Estate, who has a real concern on the environment, on the salmon, and enjoys his very beautiful yacht, the Octopus, that he enjoys quite a bit out on the ocean. But the reality is that when people begin to focus on this and understand that we need clean water, clean air, and we need to focus on that, because in the past, we have had entities and businesses begin to put profit over protecting the environment. And from the City of Portland's position, I'll use an example, is that when we're talking stormwater runoff, such as at the Willamette Boat Ramp, we need to focus on these properties and also understanding when we're allowing things to go into the water, and when we're talking dredging, the city can make a stand and understand best practices aren't to take contaminated silt from the Willamette and dump it into the center of the Columbia. When you allow that to happen and do not speak up, that is not salmon-safe. You have to stand up and speak up and say, "It may cost more money. We might need to go to the Oregon Marine Board and get some type of a grant," but you do not pour pollution into the river. Society is stepping up now. We're not putting up with it anymore. We're not happy about the Superfund cleanup. And by the way, the Superfund cleanup, get ready, Governor Brown, because I'm proposing to drop the whole bill on you. And you can pay for all the submersible land pollution and then worry about getting funded down the line. But you can take care of your submersible land since you own it and pay the whole bill. And I'm not talking $1 billion. I want you to pay $10 billion for the Portland Harbor Superfund cleanup, and you figure out where you're going to get that money. And again, we need to stop polluting the river. Stop allowing the City of Portland to get permits to remove toxic silt from the Willamette and dump it into the Columbia, and then get your safe, your Salmon Safe certification, which I think you should have it pulled for those type of actions. And that is you, Commissioner Fritz, allowing that to happen, not speaking up, and stopping you from polluting this beautiful river that should never have been polluted to begin with. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Yes, my name is Robert Wallace. I'm with film the police 911. And I want to congratulate you on the Salmon Safe. It's just unfortunately that the women and children in this community are not safe. The 12th of this month, police beat and pepper sprayed women and shoved them downstairs, including one that was missing a leg, and injured a lady that had brain surgery. And like Keith Davis has said several times, this city is known to be the number-one city for child trafficking. So instead of having the police do what they're supposed to be doing, which is enforcing the laws, you send them against peaceful protesters in riot gear, and you beat up women and children, and you pepper spray the women and children. That's not cool, you know? And, you know, you might get awards and say how salmon-safe this is, but the women and children of this community are not safe. They're not safe under your command because you don't know what's, you know, you're the, you're the police commissioner, and you just, and you just allow the police to brutalize women and children, and you think that's good? You, you don't put any money forward to, or very little money forward, to stop child trafficking in this town? I'd be ashamed of myself, Faru. In fact, what, nothing I have to say is you should resign, Mayor. You're not doing nothing. You're not, you took the hat of police commissioner, you know, and you're not doing anything. All you are is a conflict of interest between the mayor's office and the police department, you know? And this city is a standing joke, you know? People are going to sit there and say, "Yeah, it's salmon-safe," but yet you brutalize women and children and disabled people. I've brought up several times about the parking of disabled people along Waterfront Avenue. Business owners sit there and park in two-hour, three-hour spots and not in spots where, you know, they, the exempt plates where they can park with exempt placards. When they got exempt placards in their car. And then when someone that's disabled wants to go down and enjoy the waterfront, or go down by the fire department, or go down by the piers, they got to park five, six, seven blocks away because these business owners are taking up these spots that disabled people should have. Charlie, you need to pay attention to your city, not sit up in the mayor's office and talk and kick it with just the richy-rich people. You need to see what the city's about. You needed to go out there and experience getting pepper sprayed, like these women and children were.
Okay, thanks very much. Next, go ahead.
Yes, I wanted to talk about the runoff that goes into our, into our rivers and our oceans. Yes, I wanted to talk about the runoff that goes into our rivers and our oceans. And I was here on the 12th when I, when you had like a cluster of people that were being pushed out the back door. And I'm going to talk about pepper spraying chemicals and that running off into the river. But before I get to that point, while all the pepper spray was going on in here and in the stairs, there was a cluster of people, and I was outside, and I was watching, and I honestly thought that I was watching a murder happening before my eyes. There was a young man being trampled while people are being, also simultaneously being pepper sprayed, pepper sprayed, pepper sprayed all on the street. They're using it all on the street. It's running into our oceans. How does that affect the fish? I don't think you care. I mean, if you don't care about people being, having chemical weapons deployed on them, I just really doubt that you care about salmon-safe city. Or you're trying, but it's such a joke. It's such a joke that you sit here and you're acting like you're doing something nice, and you almost murdered somebody. I think that was the intention. There's a woman, her name is Sarah Long. She was sprayed with pepper spray, and she's sitting outside, it's on video, and she's suffering for like 15 to 20 minutes straight. You hear it on the video. And the police are just surrounding her. You know, safe city? That's a joke. There's chemicals, weapons sprayed all over the city in a place where we have rain, and it rains on that chemical, runs into the oceans. Are you kidding me? Are you kidding me? Give me back my phone. I had my phone taken away. I was let off at midnight after there's absolutely no, no, I have been arrested twice for asserting my First Amendment rights. I was left to fend for myself. After midnight, I was released, a woman, without anything, because my bags were stolen. My phone is stolen. You all still have my phone even though there's absolutely no charges against me. It was a false imprisonment, I think. I don't really know why I was ejected and put in jail. I was taken out of this City Hall, domestic violence style, without anybody...
Thanks very much.
No, I still have two seconds. Don't interrupt me.
Actually, you're done. Mr. Wilkins, go ahead.
Give me back my phone.
On this issue, last week, I talked about students making their own bottled water.
Put your name in the record, though.
Oh, Shevrek Wilkins. My view is that it'll take thousands of years to clean up the Willamette River, let it flush naturally. Lightning talks about $10 billion. I don't think it will do any effect. My own view is...
Folks, do not interrupt. Go ahead, please.
In 1996, there was a flood in which President Clinton came out, and Mary Verikats, it almost flooded over the banks of the Willamette River. We also dipped into the Columbia River well water for the first time, and then there's accusations, there's radar. About that time, or maybe Hanford, my daughter got bladder cancer. My thing is, I think at that time, they should have issued a warning that pregnant women and young children should not drink the water and drink bottled water. Okay? I don't believe in this idea that you could... I'm sorry, like, we have contaminated the water, it's impossible to clean it up, and we should spend more money making sure when children are young, they have a sensitive immune system, we're bigger, we're adults. My daughter was conceived, or she was just born when we had drank in this water. Okay? I don't, I think we should make a science in Oregon, since we like water and we have a low population, of filtering water. Okay? I make a joke that I drink beer because it comes from Wisconsin, and they poil it, and it's got fluoride in it. But that's okay. I mean, I'm just saying that's pure water. And the Bo'wan water is not filtered.
It's fine, huh?
It's unfiltered. So just drink bottled water. And I like to encourage high school students to make distilled water that's pure and give it to the fountains or something. Stop this idea that you're going to have pure water. It's impossible. And it's not a local problem. All major rivers in the United States, like Michigan, are contaminated.
Thank you very much. Thank you all.
I'll finish.
Anyone else? All right, then let's take a vote, please, on the resolution.
Novick?
Really appreciate the work of the bureaus and of Salmon Safe. I just want to call out some of the plaudits that Salmon Safe gave to the Bureau of Transportation at page 13 of the report. KBOB employs significant management practices and programs that are innovative and consistent with Salmon Safe standards, including an innovative stormwater wetland treatment system recently installed on a two-acre section of the Albina Storage Yard, the Sunderland facility, a well-managed facility for bulk composting large quantities of leaves from street sweeping, and onsite stormwater treatment through a swale and rain garden. There is minimal input of herbicides, fertilizers, and irrigation in green space areas. There is good coordination and partnership with other bureaus and jointly managed sites. So I think we can all be proud of our bureaus. We really appreciate the work of Salmon Safe. We appreciate the existence of Salmon Safe. And I also want to say that although salmon, of course, are the symbol of the Northwest, and we all care deeply about salmon, we also do care about other species. And I hope that sometime in the near future, a be-safe certification organization will arise to applaud the city for efforts such as Commissioner Fritz's efforts to ban neocodonoids for the use in our parks. Aye.
Ma'am, you may not interrupt. Please, no more interruptions. Let people speak, whether they're here as citizens or members of the council. Please proceed.
Fritz.
Thank you, Mayor, and congratulations. This is fabulous. I didn't realize we were the first salmon-safe city. It's the kind of thing that would come to council if you're running for reelection. Yay, well done. And I want to reflect that you were able to get this done in partnership with your bureaus, as well as all the other work that you've been doing, because you have been dedicating yourself to the work that you were elected to do. So I want to thank you for that. I was confused at first because I thought, well, we've done this before, haven't we? And then, of course, you explained that, yes, indeed, we have done it for the Parks Bureau. Jim Fraschisconee was the commissioner in 2004 when we first did it. Commissioner Fish got it recertified in 2012. And so it's fun to have the passed on such a legacy of great work in the parks and then have this partnership between the other bureaus. I want to particularly thank Roberta Jordan, who's back from retirement, because she cares so much about this, and she spent her career doing good things for the city. And so I thank you all very much. I actually, I know that Roberta's retired because I went to the retirement. I've learned not to say thanks to anybody else because they are retired, because if I haven't been told it by my staff, I tend to make mistakes that people then tell me that they're not retired. So if any of you are also retired, thank you for coming back. And thank you, everybody, for this. It's good to celebrate that we actually do do some things right, so we can have a salmon-safe city in the midst of a Superfund which we're all committed to cleaning up. I also want to thank the Willamette Vineyards for the gift of the wine, which the mayor and I will accept on behalf of the city. As you all know, that we have very strict lobbying and gift rules. And rather than be rude and asking how much this has cost, we will donate it to a community event so that everybody in the community who happens to be at that event can enjoy it. Thank you very much. Aye.
Yes.
Mayor, I want to echo what Commissioner Fritz said, and thank you for putting an ambitious marker on the table and leading this effort. And I want to tell you how proud I am of the work of the two utilities, the Water Bureau and the Bureau of Environmental Services, for stepping up and being part of this effort. And it has become ingrained in their culture to think about these issues. Sustainability, salmon safe, these are not ancillary to their mission. It's core to their mission. And I love that comment that the gentleman from the vineyard said, that our competitive advantage in the future is price, value, and values. And I love, I've thought about that. I haven't heard it stated so succinctly. We know, for example, the utilities, that people tell us good value trumps price if they get good value. Now we're saying values in addition to value and price. So that's a good outcome. We're proud to be part of this, and we will continue this work even as you move on to the next challenge in your life. Thank you. Aye.
Saltzman?
Well, I also want to congratulate Mayor Hills for bringing this home and giving Portland to be the first salmon-safe city. It's quite an honor. And I also wanted to commend the five or six bureaus that are involved. And while water and sewer and transportation and parks seem like likely suspects, having Portland Fire and Rescue also be part of the salmon safe, and think about things like runoff when they wash their vehicles and how to keep that out of our storm sewers, is also an important part of being salmon-safe. So I appreciate Portland Fire and Rescue being at the table, too. Pleased to support this. Aye.
Hills?
Well, I want to thank my colleagues, because this has, as you just mentioned, been a multi-bureau effort. So each of us has had people working on this challenge and on being the best. And I appreciate that very much. I also want to say, I've used this phrase a couple of times, and I'm going to embarrass her again, this is typical Susan Anderson. And that is, when I say typical Susan Anderson, it means that we're doing something better first, but we're doing it in a way that brings people together. And I'm not quite sure how she does it, but she does it again and again, and I appreciate her very much in this work. I also want to thank Jackie Dingfelder, who was a member of my staff, who was a big proponent of this, along with Zach Klenosky and Brian Worley, who are, they're still advocating for this in our office. It is good that Portland sets the tone for other cities. I've seen that happen. I've seen that happen in transit. I've seen it happen in lots of progressive causes. So Dan, we appreciate the fact that you've put us through a very rigorous analysis and that we've passed, and that now we get to pass it on. Well done all around. Thank you all very much. Aye. I understand Dan may have a plaque that he wants to present to us. Is that right?
Yeah.
So maybe we could get the bureau staff who worked on this to come join the council and take a picture together? Please, come on up. Okay, Ms. Vanderlin, I'm going to have to recess. You're excluded. I told you not to interrupt, so you're going to need to leave now. Thank you.
Resess? We didn't recess.
Just for a second.
Just for a second, so she can leave. Yeah, we'll stay here.
One minute, Joe.
One minute.
You need to do a...
Yeah.
We'll wait for you if you do a quick break.
We'll give you two hours.
Not necessarily.
Charlie, I have a...
Recycled highway sign, but he was at some pains to point out that it was legally obtained. So...
It was a highway sign.
You can see it was a highway sign. Pretty cool. Right under the rivers where he or she belongs. Okay, let's move on, please, to the next time-certain item, which is 1186.
Appoint a pool of community volunteers to be available to serve on the Police Review Board.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Constantine Sevier, Director of the Independent Police Review. I am here to forward the auditor's recommendation of a pool of community volunteers to serve on the Police Review Board. There are 13 folks who will be recommended to you. The Police Review Board, briefly, it serves as an advisory body to the Chief of Police and the Police Commissioner. Here are serious disciplinary cases involving police officers and all officer-involved shootings, in custody deaths. The Police Review Board also makes policy recommendations to the Police Bureau and the Chief, and as well as training recommendations. So according to city code, the Auditor's Office, particularly the Independent Police Review, serves as the city agency that gathers the community members so that council can appoint to the Police Review Board. And the diverse group of individuals before you today is the result of the extreme efforts of Irene Konev in our office. Build upon some prior recruitment cycles of going all over this community to get community member volunteers that reflect the diversity in this community. We have folks who are poets, librarians, attorneys, several individuals who help the most vulnerable folks in our society. We have eight women. So I'm really impressed with the quality of applicants that we can present to you. And I'll just read their names. I believe you have their background information. So I'm pretty sure you read it already, and you are impressed as well as I am. So the 13 individuals that we are presenting to you today are Bruno Michi, Izara Essentio, Austin Battelden, Jeff Bissonnet, David Denneke, Bridget Donigan, Emily Duquette, Svetlana Glinka, Laura Orr, Rhiannon Orizaga, Joe Pugh, Lisa Rogers, and Lindsay Short. And just in the interest of time, I'll cut my presentation short.
Can I make a request? Can we match names and faces here?
Oh, yes.
Even if it just means having people stand if they're able, just so that we can...
So can all the PRB applicants stand up if you're here right now?
Welcome. Thank you very much for your willingness to serve and for being here today. So thank you. Okay, questions for Mr. Sevier or for...
So could you just, for people watching, tell me what the Police Review Board does and what these volunteers will be doing?
So, great question, Commissioner. So the Police Review Board, most simply, hears fully completed misconduct investigations and makes recommended findings and proposed discipline in misconduct cases in an officer-involved shootings and custody deaths. These community members before us today will serve individually as part of a community member pool. The Police Review Board has five voting members. There is one slot allocated for one community member. In officer-involved shootings, use of force cases, there are two community members that serve.
And then are the others just advisory on the policies, or is that the only function that the folks who are applying for, we're going to approve today, is taking turns to be on particular board reviews?
Yeah. So it's, the way it works is basically, on an individual case, we will, the Police Bureau will put together the five voting members, and the community members who are here today, it's just each one of them serves on a particular board.
And how is it selected which one serves on a particular review?
Oh, so that is done randomly with the Review Board coordinator. So a lot of it is based on availability of community members. And that's actually one of the biggest struggles of, one, getting volunteers and then having people kind of serve for their three-year terms. A lot of the boards are in the middle of the day, and it's, can be anywhere from a two-hour to four or five hours. So the fact that we have so many community members who are willing to give up a significant part of their workday, I believe most of the community members who are volunteering for this particular three-year term are fully employed and/or have obligations with their family, like being full-time mothers.
About how much time would they be given in advance to know that they were selected for a particular board?
About two weeks.
Okay. And is there any attention paid on the selection to making sure that there's a balance of women and men and racial diversity on the board?
So one of, I believe, one of the reasons why the Auditor's Office was given the privilege of gathering the community members was so that we would do a pretty diverse and wide-reaching selection of community members. So one of the things that Irene does and other IPR staff members do when we are doing our outreach events is try our outreach events is trying to go to particularly events that are aimed at women and particularly are new and emerging Portlanders. When you go back, let's say, six or seven years ago, we had a police review board, particularly on the community member side, that was overwhelmingly retired individuals and overwhelmingly white, and it didn't really reflect our community, and particularly on police oversight issues. I think there's an important aspect of making sure that all Portlanders are represented on the police review board, because we all, as Portlanders, have a stake in the success of the Police Bureau and holding officers accountable. And these community members, as you've seen by them standing up, really are a very diverse group of individuals.
I appreciate that explanation. I'm also wondering, when you're going to seat the five voting members and somebody's picking the one, is there attention paid to who the other four would be?
So, the five voting members, that's determined by city code, so the officer, the involved officer's commander is one of them, IPR director, assistant chief, who's in charge of the branch, and a community member, and a pure officer member. So, those are the five voting members of a police review board.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm not being very clear, although that was good information to get out, too. And if you look at, does the person appointing whichever one of the volunteers gets in on a particular case, look at, well, we've got four people with these demographics, and could we please make sure that we've got somebody who matches, for instance, either the appellant or the officer?
Oh, to my knowledge, that, I do not know that answer.
And you're currently, you and the auditor are currently in process of looking at the police review board process and bringing back something to council?
So, the police review board process, no. So, as, you know, as we're all aware of, there was a focus group that looked at variety of changes to the accountability system. So, what the auditor proposed was a relatively narrow attempt at fixing particularly issues revolving around the earlier stages of the administrative investigation process involving IPR, of the Police Bureau's internal affairs, and then the appeal stage involving the Citizen Review Committee. The only change to the police review board would be to allow community members to be able to be present during the fact-finding section of the police review board and be able to speak at the police review board, which they currently do not.
I thought at one point there was a suggestion to put more of the Citizen Review Committee on the board.
So, that was part of the option of possibly merging the Citizen Review Committee's appeal function with the police review board. There was significant public feedback on that. One of the biggest issues was, the police review board is not a public body, so there is not ability to comment publicly. The city could choose to do that, but it would face significant issues from the employee side of possibly that being a mandatory subject of bargaining. And so, that's where, I guess, the decision-makers within the city left it.
Well, thank you, and thank you for just explaining to people watching at home in very clear language what all of these roles do, and thank you also to the volunteers.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
So, let me follow up on something that Commissioner Fritz raised, and I'll have to step carefully here, because I'm talking about a real case, so obviously I won't get as specific as I might. Folks, please do not interrupt, me or anybody else. Commissioner Fritz raised the issue of gender balance on these panels. There was a recent case involving sexual misconduct by an officer, it was a male officer, and the entire panel that reviewed it was male. What are we going to do about that?
So, you know, so the police review board, that is something that is within the Police Bureau. So, the auditor's office's role is in recommending to council the citizen volunteers. From a global perspective of making sure that the, you know, all aspects of our accountability system reflects our community, I think that's part of the conversation that we have been having for the last year or so, particularly around changing the accountability system. Going forward, I think that's a conversation that I think we should have, as long as you're mayor, as well with the future mayor, because it's going to be a long-term conversation of one, you know, part of it is the way our accountability system works, is that ultimately the decision rests with the Chief of Police and yourself as the Police Commissioner. The community has certain parts where it can kind of participate, but there's a lot of it that rests within the Police Bureau. The Police Bureau is not as diverse as our society is. You know, the Police Bureau is overwhelmingly male. So, part of that is making sure there are more Police Bureau commanders, assistant chiefs who are female. So, because when you look at who the five voting members are on any police review board, three of those slots are Police Bureau slots. There is one IPR slot, there is one community member slot. So, you know, on the IPR side, two-thirds of the managing folks at IPR are female. If you look at the Police Bureau, it's not going to be two-thirds, it's going to be eighty-something percent the other direction. So, I think part of it is starting with the Police Bureau.
Well, I want to flag that issue. It is both a Police Bureau issue and a structural issue and a practice question.
But in that particular instance, if there is an allegation of sexual misconduct, the one person that we do have, we do have ability to make sure that there's a, both sexes are involved, is to choose one of the females on the, from this volunteer group, and make sure that, in those particular cases, that there is somebody who looks like and identifies with the appellant.
Sure. Good suggestion.
There might be something to put into the policy when we bring it back.
Yes, ma'am. A good thing to put into the policy. Thank you. Okay, other questions? Thank you. Okay, let's take public testimony, please.
We have seven people signed up. The first three, please come on up, are Shadrick J. Wilkins, Joe Walsh, and Charles Bridgecrane Johnson.
I'm Shadrick Wilkins, and I wouldn't mind being on the police review board. Something has changed my mind recently. A month ago, Joe and I sparred around about the issue of blood testing people after a car accident, and Mayor Hale says that those, what, thirty-three, thirty-four homicides by cars more than guns or whatever, fifteen. It is possible that if people are going to be blood tested, they may resist the police, they may try to flee the police, and it might be necessary to have additional police officers to restrain this person, or chase after them, whatever, to give them a blood test, which I insist is something Joe disagrees about, you know, certain seizure, but I don't agree with that. Because, actually, this week, some guy in the United States crashed a truck and killed ten people and himself, and they don't really know if he was... I do agree with this, this is coupled with the idea that we now have recreational marijuana. Some people are blindsided, they think they're better drivers if they're high, and it, unlike alcohol, if you're high, let's say this, if you're in, if you have a fender bender and you say, you almost have a heart attack, you should be stressed when you're driving. Deciding that you're totally relaxed is ridiculous. Your blood pressure should go up. So, I have a problem with people who smoke or are on Prozac. I don't think if you're on Prozac, you should drive a car. You should be stressed. Okay, that argument. So, I'm saying that because of this, I've now changed my mind, and I support the police contract, because we'll need additional officers to support blood testing, so I agree with the mayor, Amanda Fritz, and the police contract. And you can boo me if you want, but I'm saying to us, too, that people who...
Actually, you can't, folks. Keep going.
People here, who generally oppose a police contract, also do not want blood tests. Think about that one.
Okay, thanks very much. You'd like me next?
Good morning. My name is Joe Walsh, and I represent Individuals for Justice, for the record. Once again, we take issue with the process. We all know in our hearts and our brain that we are in serious trouble, and our mechanisms are not working as far as the police department is concerned, so we should redo them. My understanding on this is you have five members, and one is a community member. Is that accurate? So, it's, you have four votes, and then you have this community person that's sitting there with the cops, and they probably have their guns, because they always carry their guns in these meetings. That's not a good environment to have truth and understanding of what is going on. So, you should redo it. And one of the ways you can redo it is to set up the charter commission. You promised us, Mayor, when you came in, that you would do that. You never did. And it takes the mayor to do it. You really have to institute the charter commission. So, maybe you could say to Ted Wheeler, when he's coming in, to think about that, and look at all of our commissions, all of our committees, because they're not working. We know that, all right? And whatever we're doing is not something we should continue to do, because what I said last night is really accurate. We are one incident away from a riot that will tear the city apart, and we're all fighting to stop it. That's what I do. I fight to stop it, and if I anger people in the process, too bad, because I've been in riots. I grew up in New York. I've been in riots. I know what a riot does. It's really scary, and it's really damaging. So, we need to redo everything that we've been doing as far as the police is concerned. Look at it. And if it takes a charter change, make the charter change and give it to the people and let them vote on it. You have to get this city involved. It's not. You have a very small group of people that come here, week after week after week. We don't get paid for this, by the way. We do this on our own. It's because we believe in what we're doing, whether you like it or not. We believe in what we're doing, and we will continue to do it, even with Ted Wheeler. Charter commission, you have to make the changes. If you keep doing what you're doing, this city is going to be in serious trouble with one incident, and Mayor, you almost caused it last week. The way those cops came after those people, I missed it, but I watched it on video. It was awful.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson, go ahead.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, I'm being identified as Charles Bridgecrane Johnson, and it turns out, you probably can't see this out there because of the weird lighting, but it looks like I'm seated in what was the seat of that guy who's been charged by the Oregon Department of Justice Criminal Division with a misdemeanor for shooting people in the back, or some events related to that. I regret that I'm not really prepared, so I don't know who these other two gentlemen testifying at that time are. I can't tell you that that's Carla Love-More, and that's Joe Walsh, very diligent citizen. And on the next tab of my browser, it says Byzantine Portland Police, fourteen million nine hundred thousand results. The top result being, hopefully, from the United States Department of Justice. You remember them? We talked with them yesterday. Ellen Osnatch, City Attorney, talked about me. I don't think she got to mention me by name in my cup of water, but we still have a Byzantine Portland Police system. We had a proposal to, I don't know, some thought the auditor wanted to streamline it. It certainly wasn't the straight-to-gulag type of streamlining, because it was really, like, more impunity and more emancipation, but I'm not as prepared as probably some of the following presenters. I'm hoping that when, that Mr. Handelman has chosen to testify on this, and he'll talk to us about why, when we recruit citizens, that's not what we mean. We mean we're going to recruit lawyers and business owners. I didn't even take notes about the exact number of people, but we, some people think there are certain situations in this country that are a mess, and that maybe we should draw more clear lines to the percentage of attorneys that, oh, look, they're missing. They're missing from the city commission. I'm up here talking about attorneys having an excessive role in government, and Attorney Steve Novick and Attorney Nick Fish are not quite participating in public government at this moment. Beautiful. Perhaps they've gone to Salem or to, oh, their eyes are probably on the prize, the Senate. The point is, is that at least this is not called the Citizen Review Committee. Our current Citizen Review Committee is staffed by a former prosecuting attorney, was a twelve-year prosecutor DA in Michigan, so we're not really getting citizen involvement. We're gleaning some high-level people. The police don't prosecute those people for their crimes. The police troll among the poor and people of color and cause their problems there, and then their conduct is judged by, there are some interesting people on this panel, I'm impressed with a couple of candidates, but I hope Mr. Handelman will speak more comprehensively to the problem of the pool that's before you. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Mary Eng, Dan Handelman, and Kenner Swain.
Ms. Eng is asking if I'll go first. I'm happy to do that. Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Dan Handelman, I'm with the group Portland Cop Watch. The pool of civilians that we are talking about rotates onto the police review board one at a time, so in other words, it is a misnomer to call it a board, since the members never talk to each other. Also, since the police review board's hearings are not open to the public or the media, or as yet, to the person who was harmed by the police, they never interact with the community. Because a CRC member rotates onto seven-member boards, no two PRB members ever sit together. Portland Cop Watch sent a second inquiry to the Bureau recently about why their July 2016 PRB report hadn't been posted, and they quietly placed the highly redacted case files online last week. I don't know why, if they're so proud of this, and they were so transparent, and this is the excuse that you give of why the public is shut out, that we get this report, that they don't put out a news release and inform people. When we wrote an email asking where that report is, we didn't even get an email back. The Mercury published something about it, that's how we knew it was published. And as I've said before, we played, we like to play police review board report Mad Libs, because it's so highly redacted, you don't have no idea what they're talking about, so we put in Kim Kardashian's name and other... Anyway, the PRB is such a secretive body, we have no idea how many members previously appointed are continuing. The PRB used to have nineteen or twenty members, and thirteen are being nominated. There are nine females and four males. Six are current or former attorneys, and while it sort of helps to have a legal analysis of serious police misconduct cases, the PRB is reviewing them for policy violations, not legal ones, so standards are much different. The question of how many people are in the board civilian pool is not helped by the supporting paperwork, which states these nominees fulfill vacancies of expired terms, quote, "bringing the total to thirteen," but there are only thirteen names for you today, so I'd like to hear an answer of how many total members there are in the pool. In addition, the auditor seems to have created new authority for the Bureau with the ordinance stating, "The Police Bureau will select citizen members for the police review board from a pool of volunteers recommended by the city auditor and appointed by city council." The ordinance says the members will be nominated by the auditor and appointed by the council, not that the Bureau has any say in appointees. One of the applicant's biography states that she's looking forward to representing all voices not currently at the table for a safer community for all. The PRB members have no mechanism to communicate with the broader public about what they're doing. They never hold public meetings, the hearings are confidential, and names are not used in the meetings, in the reports. The board is composed of three or four police, a manager from the IPR, and a PRB member, CRC members, who have served on the boards, as Mr. Walsh was saying, have reported feeling uncomfortable that it's a roomful of police. This is probably amplified for the non-force-related PRBs where civilians are there solo. The simple solution to speeding up CRC appeals would be to allow PRB members to rotate onto CRC panels. They review, they have the same training, and on that note, their trainings used to be public, and in fact, used to be posted online as videos for the public to see. Can I go on for another thirty seconds or so, Mayor?
May I as well, in the interest of equality, or only him?
He's representing an organization.
Thank you. Similarly, so the, the community is not even invited to those trainings anymore where we used to be. So, I do want to just say that, you know, it was brought up that part of the problem with having PRB meetings in public is, has to do with the contract. Your ten days to rescind your vote on that has passed, but I still would call on you. You suspended your rules to push everybody out of here, you suspended your rules to leave this chamber, you suspended your rules to change the order of the agenda. You can suspend your rules and revoke the contract. It doesn't go into effect until the eleventh, and we urge you to rescind the contract right away, so these changes can be made to the oversight system that are urgent.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Handelman. Ms. Eng?
Hi. City Council, nice to see you. My name is Mary Eng. Dan Saltzman, I want to commend you on your style of presentation. Whenever the mayor is absent, your manner of treating citizens has been nothing but respectful. respectful, so far as I've seen. And I think you deserve a lot of credit for that, because I think when you show respect, you receive respect back. And my mom kind of taught me about that theory in psychology is the looking-glass self. And if you're looking for the worst in people, you can bring out the worst easily. So I really thank you for that. And for these applicants or nominees, I want you to keep very much attention to the latest report from the DOJ. It is a very dense document, a lot of very heavy acronyms, but there's some very interesting points regarding the utilization of a neo-Nazi to harass Jewish people at the police accountability meeting with the Citizens Review Committee. It's very coded language, but you can find this on page 107 regarding using a neo-Nazi to assault the accountability process. I'm very thrilled with the DOJ assessment. They are moving forward. And I've been on a letter-writing campaign, speaking at City Council, facing direct retaliation, including being bruised at this chamber. So I have a process under review. John Rhodes at Internal Affairs is, he's investigating the brutality that was applied to me for being, as a trained paralegal, an advocate for police brutality victims. So you must know that there is direct retaliation and intimidation tactics, including positing a weapon on me, so I might be killed. Or, and Mr. Hales won't let me know if he and Engstrom conspired, if he, Engstrom and Chandler conspired, if Waltz and Engstrom conspired. So we've got a lot of possibilities as to who came up with this dodgy excuse to beat me up. But it is very fishy, and you've got to be prepared for that. Because when I talked to John Rhodes at Internal Affairs, he said, "Oh, Todd Engstrom would never do anything like that." And I, you know what I said to him after he had covered me with bruises is, "Well, I've heard a lot of things about you, Todd Engstrom, but you're a perfect gentleman," which was a stretch of the truth, because he was not treating me like a normal Swedish man, because in Sweden, we have gender equity. So I asked him, "Well, are you Swedish?" And I said, "I'm Norwegian." So then I was kind of like, "Wow, these American Scandinavians really aren't up to par on gender equity. This is quite unusual." Because I've actually studied policing memoranda from Sapo from the Swedish police, because I find their progressive ideas about gender balance very important. And I have to make it known that on our coab testimony last night, we went after Marshman's choking of his son, his stalking of his ex-in-police uniform. We went at it for, we kept, Rosenbaum and Watson were so exhausted from Jonas Geisler and the citizens that we kept after them. No woman in her right mind would go to a police force that involves a child-abusing, choking stalker for a chief, back-to-back with a shooting scandal with alcoholism. And a cover-up.
Okay, next.
Good morning. My name is Kenner Swain. And pardon me for turning my back, but there's a reason for it.
I'm sorry, we can't hear you on the microphone if you do that.
I'd just like to say, as a citizen, that it's very stressful to come to these meetings. I'm fairly new to Portland. And hear all the rude interruptions that I've heard. So I'm a citizen. I'm not an elected official. No one's paying me the big bucks to sit here and say anything. These usually are open meetings, and so pretty much everyone gets a chance to sit and have their, have their say. I do feel that there's, so having said that, it's also disheartening. It was disheartening to not have an open public meeting when the contract was finally voted on. And I think, having taught high school in Chicago for several years, having worked at a psychiatric hospital preaching sermons for a year, it's, if you are being paid the big bucks, or the medium bucks, or whatever, it's your job to keep control of the room. And it's difficult. But it's, you know, it's your job, in my opinion, to arrest people, maybe not to use pepper spray, but to try to keep public meetings going. So maybe it is an idea. If it's too far outside the box, maybe you could cancel the contract and take heed of Commissioner Novick's objections and say, "We have an emergency, and maybe we could do something to reconsider." I don't advise anyone to resign. Everyone should finish their term, in my opinion. If you're being paid, you should do that. But this particular issue the Police Review Board does, it seems to me to be, I don't know how it's related to the Citizen Review Committee, but it seems like it's going down the wrong direction toward less transparency. It seems that way, from what I read. I don't know if the media is distorting things. I appreciate being able to speak without interrupting and editorial comments. I really wish people would have enough respect. I feel like sometimes--
Let's have a recess! Let's have a recess!
Hey, we have one. Mr. Johnson, you're excluded.
I really feel like--
We're recessed until he's excluded.
We just give them three minutes to start.
Yeah, we'll start over, because I think we all--
I got 38 seconds.
You got more than that. So again, our apologies for the interruption and please--
I would almost apologize for having made methodological remarks that might have provoked some people. And I'd just like to repeat that I appreciate your holding open meetings. It's, you know, I lived in Boston, I lived in Chicago for 20 years. There's certain, the meetings didn't seem to be quite as open. So that's an important part of keeping a civic culture going. And so I don't know nearly as much as many of the people who testified about what really is happening and what really needs to be done, but just a couple of comments. I, and these are rhetorical questions first. How is this new entity similar or different, I wonder, compared to the CRC and the independent police review process? So that's just a question on the table for me. Is it going the wrong direction in terms of transparency? The Portland Mercury and some other people seem to indicate that in terms of transparency, it could be going the wrong direction.
Let me interrupt you for a second, because there are some proposals that the auditor has made for changing the structure of this. That's not what's before us today. This is just appointees to the current structure. So that's a separate discussion that's been postponed, because there was a lot of opposition to those proposals. So, so this is just people being appointed into the current structure, not changing the structure. As I, if I understand, Mr. Sevier, I think is still here, but I think that's what's before us from the auditor.
Right.
Okay. And then I'd also read that apparently the police chief or police union had advised police officers not to show up before meetings of, I guess it was the Citizen Review Committee or a previous entity. So to me, that would be an important issue, not in terms of the powers, if any, of this new board, but I think that's an important thing, whether if you have the police chief or the police union, or the new mayor, or you as head of the Police Bureau, at least encouraging or mandating police officers to show up.
They are required to show up.
So just, and again, a clarification. This board serves internally. It's part of the internal review with one citizen of the volunteers that we have here today, as well as others who have been participating and will continue to participate. The committee, the Citizens Review Committee is all done in public right now, and that's a separate process.
Okay. So my two overarching points, and I'll try to be brief, are, as Mayor Hale said two or three weeks ago, at the very end of a meeting before whistling, said, "No good deed goes unpunished." So I hope that this new entity doesn't make that proverbial wisdom true. I hope that, I hope that whatever this new thing is, gives the lie to your remark that no good deed goes unpunished, which is often true, often true. You know, I do think that, speaking of which, you were talking about the 48-hour rule, and I do hope that that, I hope that citizens are interviewed, on average, on the same timeline as police, when, when there's a legal case, or a murder, or an act of violence. I mean, to me, that's the main thing. In the police contract, the thing that struck me most was, the police said, "We're going to stand on our, capital C, capital R, constitutional rights." And I thought, I spent one morning at the Bundy trial, and I thought, now we have the police. Sounds to me like they're talking like Ammon Bundy, who has probably a political future, but that's another story. And to me, the overarching issue is, is there a monopoly on the legitimate use of force and violence? And that's what, I mean, you do want that. You need people to serve and protect, and that's the role of a state, to have a monopoly on the legitimate use of violence. So there is a thin blue line, on the one hand, but then citizens have been testifying, I think, and protesting, to make the point that there's a huge gray area of legit, is there legitimate violence going on? Is there illegitimate violence going on? And so I'm sure that you need to keep holding public meetings, insofar as you can.
Folks, please don't interrupt.
Insofar as you possibly can, you need to keep on holding public meetings to talk about the issues of legitimate versus illegitimate violence. And you don't have a civic discourse if there's not respect for everyone having their say.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you both.
Could I just, Mr. Swain, thank you very much for your comments, especially--
You're welcome.
Well, both before and answer and during the recess. Yesterday, we had the status report conference with Judge Michael Simon about the Department of Justice settlement agreement. And one of the things he said was that we need to have a conversation about how we have conversations. That it's gone, that because people are worried and concerned about individual actions that the council takes, we haven't had a community conversation about how do we continue to have respectful disagreements? The council is very committed to having open meetings. We're concerned about what happened on the 12th, and the mayor's ordered a full investigation. This Police Review Board would be part of the review of, of holding officers accountable if mistakes were made. And that's why it's important to have these community volunteers who take interns to be on that committee. And then there are the other Internal Affairs, which is also completely internal, and the Citizens Review Board Committee Appeals. So there's been a lot of discussion since I've been here for, I've been in Portland for over 30 years now, and we're continually looking at how can we do police accountability better. What's important is, to me at least, is that the contract and the agreement was that the police are accepting the discipline guide. So in the past, things have gone, appeals have gone to arbitration, and the arbitrator has said, "It's past practice that you didn't fire Officer Y for doing this, so you can't fire Officer X for doing it either." Now there's a standard discipline guide, which the police have accepted. So if either Officer X or Officer Y does something, the standard discipline is such and such. That's a huge step forward. There's also the, I mean, Mayor Hale's had fired 12 people in the Police Bureau while he's been in office. Chief Marshman has fired four people since he became chief, which is not that long ago. And those people are going to stay fired. So, and then the issue about the 48-hour rule that you raised, because community members rightly called out the body camera draft in the public hearing that we had, with everybody having a turn to testify, they called out that the draft camera policy is in no way, shape, or form what would be acceptable. The mayor then proposed an amendment that said that, no, that's not the draft policy. It could be, but we're going to, he's going to, the auditor is going to convene a stakeholder committee to look at what would be a best-practice body camera policy. That recommendation will come to the council for a full public hearing. And I will absolutely be looking out to make sure that nothing in that camera review or camera policy means that officers are allowed, can delay artificially the investigation of their actions. And we also have to remember that, yes, indeed, everybody in this country has the right to freedom to protections under the Fifth Amendment. And if they choose to not speak, then they can choose not to speak if it's a criminal investigation. If it's other kinds of reports, then their commanding officers can ask them to, to speak and to tell the truth. So now, I know that my colleagues are being very, very kind in letting me explain this, because there's been so much misinformation about what's in the contract, what's not. And it's definitely a conversation that we need to have. But I agree with Judge Simon. First, we need to have a conversation about how to have conversations, because we continually have council disrupted, and that means that other people can't get to speak.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'm almost finished. I'd just say, if you're firm, fair, and consistent in dealing with the council meetings themselves and the mandatory bargaining as over the unresolved issues, if you're firm, fair, and consistent, like a good instructor, things will come out okay.
I'm sorry, some of the things that were said were not accurate. I just need to go on the record and correct them. Are you willing to hear what I--
I'm sorry. What was your question?
Well, I feel like what Commissioner Fritz just said was inaccurate in itself.
Well, you can disagree with her, but we're not going to have a debate between the two--
Okay, well, you can just check our fact sheet on our Portland Cop Watch website, and you'll see why that wasn't accurate.
Check ours as well. Thank you. Go ahead. Whoever's next.
That's all who signed up.
Okay. Are we ready to take action on this resolution, a report, sorry? Is there a motion to adopt a report from the auditor?
So moved.
Second. Okay. Roll call, please.
Novick?
I really appreciate the willingness of folks to serve on our volunteer boards, commissions, committees, et cetera, and especially this one, which is such a time commitment and such an emotional commitment on such controversial issues. So I really, really appreciate your service. Aye.
You are courageous people. I'm surprised you're not rushing up to scrap, push your name off the list, having seen. This is the kind of thing that you will be dealing with, because Portlanders do care passionately about having a police company. I don't like to say police force, because that's already framing. Officers who serve the community and who do good things. And that's, I appreciate your willingness, not only to sit here for three hours and hear the concern from the community, but also then to volunteer to be on the board. Particularly thank Irene Kornell for your fantastic outreach, and also, I don't know if it was you or Mr. Sevier who wrote the impact statement, but it's absolutely outstanding in terms of telling community people who want to know about this what the process was and how they, we got to these nominees. So thank you very much to all of you. And thank you to Mayor, as Police Commissioner. Aye.
Hales?
Well, thank you for serving, because we do depend on citizen volunteers for all kinds of things in this city. We're actually immersed in the comprehensive land use plan for the city right now. We have these crazy volunteers who are on the planning commission who spend ridiculous number of hours doing that. So we have literally dozens of these kinds of citizen roles, and there's real power in it. In this case, it's really kind of a particular kind of power, because it's a power over one individual's life and career, as each of those cases goes through the process. And I'll tell you, you know, I've had to do some difficult things as a boss and as a mayor. One of those is visiting wounded firefighters or police officers in the hospital, like I did this week with Lieutenant St. John's, who was the hero of the incident on Northwest 23rd Avenue, and who took the brunt of the blast, because he was about 20 feet in front of the building when it went off. And I didn't really know, going into this job, how difficult that would be. And then the other thing that is difficult is those recommendations that come forward from the chief, and having been reviewed by the Police Review Board for people's discipline, come to my desk, and I read them word for word, page after page. And some of them are pretty disheartening to read. And in a few cases, including one that's underway right now, I've rejected them because the Police Review Board process didn't recommend a sufficient level of discipline. So it works. This process works, as long as everybody involved is acting in good faith and taking their responsibility seriously, and I know you will, as volunteers. So I want to thank you for that. And the city will be better for it. Thank you very much. Aye. Okay. We're going to try to get one more thing done here, and then take a recess until 2:00 PM, and that is, we're going to hear item 1198, but not take action on it.
1198, amend contract with VersaTerm Inc. for the computer-aided dispatch system used by the Bureau of Emergency Communications to change the not-to-exceed amount from $7 million to $9 million to cover the maintenance charges and the purchase of additional licenses and interfaces for the four years remaining on the contract.
Commissioner Novick?
Allies, our 911 system runs on the computer-aided dispatch system, affectionately known as the CAD. The CAD is the backbone of the service Boeck provides dispatching first responders to help people in emergencies. This ordinance extends the contract the city has with VersaTerm for our CAD. And Lisa Turley and Merle Morley from Boeck are here to explain the item further.
Good afternoon, and welcome.
Counsel, good afternoon. So my name is Merle Morley, and I am the Technology Systems Manager for the Bureau of Emergency Communications. And we're here today to ask the council to amend the existing contract between the city of Portland and VersaTerm to increase the total not-to-exceed price under this contract from $7 million to $9 million. So this contract, it consists of three terms. The first initial term was the implementation of the computer-aided dispatch system, which had a total cost of $4.2 million. The second term was for a guaranteed support of five years commencing after the initial term, to be paid annually. This had a total cost of $2.4 million, and it covered the support through the fiscal year of 2015. The-- The third term was for the optional one-year support periods in either single or multiple year increments upon mutual consent of both parties. So we have chosen to exercise the optional one-year support clause for the duration of the ten-year contract period, but the current contract does not have a high enough dollar value to extend support for the entire period. So with the average annual support cost of the system being around $632,000 per year, we are asking council to increase the contract limit by $2 million. This will cover the annual support as well as technology advancements for the duration of the contract.
Thank you. Makes sense. Questions? Thank you both.
Thank you.
Anyone want to speak on this item?
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to continue that until 2:00 PM.
I just have a comment, because we're going to be going. Thank you very much for bringing this forward. We'll vote on it this afternoon when we have four. And I think a different way to explain it might have been that when we put the contract forward in July of 2000, July 3rd of 2009, we somehow, and I was in charge of the Bureau at that time, but in my defense, I'd only had it for four days, that we just didn't, maybe didn't do the math quite correctly, because this was always envisioned that it would be a ten-year contract. So it's, looks like a lot of money right now, but that's actually what we were planning to spend. And again, thank you for implementing this system. Thank you for all the work that you do as the very first of the first responders.
Thank you. And Lisa Turley, Boeck Director, I wanted to thank you personally, Amanda. Commissioner Fritz, you have been a rock-solid supporter of this sometimes difficult project from day one, so thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Good work. Thank you so much. Let's go ahead and take action on our two-second reading items, just so we'll have only a couple of things held over to this afternoon. Let's take 1199, please.
Authorized contract with the lowest responsive bidder for the construction of the Woodlawn King Alley's sewer rehabilitation, project number E10698, for $3,780,000.
Hey, roll call, please.
Novick?
Aye.
Fritz?
Aye.
Hales?
Aye. And the other second reading item, 1201?
Should we not say 1200 is being referred back?
Oh, yeah, no, I'm sorry. 1200 is being returned to Commissioner Saltzman's office without objection. I'll do that. And then 1201.
Assessed property for sidewalk repair for the Portland Bureau of Transportation.
Roll call, please.
Novick?
Aye.
Fritz?
Aye.
Hales?
Aye. Okay, and we're recessed until 2:00, at which time we'll vote on 1198 and go to our time-certain item immediately after that. Okay.[1781.63]